Hello, everyone. It's seven o'clock and welcome to the Newbury Report zoning Board of Appeals meeting for March ninth, two thousand and twenty-one via Zoom. I'm Mark Moore, Vice Chair, calling the meeting to order as our esteemed Chair Rob Chimpetti can't be here tonight. As always, we have City Planning Director Andy Port driving the presentation visuals and managing participation of attendees with City Planner Caitlin Sullivan poised in the wings. Before I start, I always want to recognize our note taker Gretchen Joy for all her dedicated efforts. I'll start with the roll call to ensure that we have proper quorum tonight. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm Mark Moore, Vice Chair, obviously in attendance, and Rob Chimpetti is absent tonight. I will introduce each member and ask that they respond with here, starting with Secretary Stephen Delisle. Of course, reminding everyone to unmute.
Thank you. Here.
You're welcome. I've done it myself. Member Rachel Webb.
Here.
Member Ken Swanton.
Here.
Associate Member Walter Jagnon.
Here.
Associate Member Greg Bannock.
Here.
Excellent. Finding six members present. We have a quorum and will proceed with the meeting. As our Chair is absent tonight, Mr. Chinon will be the voting member, the other voting member for this meeting. For those new to the zoning Board of Appeals meetings and or new to this Zoom format, we find it helpful to describe the format of the meeting and how it flows. With the roll call completed, we will soon move to public hearings. I'll start by reading a description of the public notice to identify the application to be presented. I will then ask the applicant to present their case, for lack of a better word. And it's often the applicant's legal counsel or the applicant's architect that will present and describe the proposed changes to the property. Once the presentation is complete, we then move on to one of the reasons for these meetings, although virtual now, that they're called public hearings. We're looking for public comment. Moving into the public comment portion of the hearing entails asking any resident attendee who wishes to comment to come forward and be heard. It's vital to making these public hearings a robust exchange of thoughts and ideas. I'll ask anyone in virtual attendance who wishes to come forward and be heard tonight to raise their hand electronically utilizing the raise hand icon at the bottom of their screen. Hopefully, after a year of Zoom meetings, we're all familiar with that. Andy Port, or I will announce those that are recognized to speak. Please remember to unmute yourself before you start, as I have occasionally forgotten to do this myself, and it makes for a really awkward silence. Before starting the comment, we also ask that you provide your name and address clearly for the record. Please try to keep your comments succinct and to the point so that others who wish to comment can do so efficiently. Now, please allow me a little soapbox moment. Recently, I have noticed a trend during public comment that I wanted to address tonight. Public comment portion of the hearing should consist of comments either in favor, opposed, or to offer general comments or specific concerns. Recent meetings, however, some of which I have chaired, have gone down the slippery slope of direct Q and A between residents and the applicant. The Chair finds this inappropriate and inefficient, as is the Board's charge to follow public comments by engaging the applicants with questions related to their proposal. The Board has completed careful preparation prior to these meetings, listened to the applicant's public presentation. And lastly, here's comments from the residents. While the Board certainly values and encourages residents' thoughtful participation, I'm of the opinion that these virtual meetings often stretch late, in part due to the inefficiencies of the Zoom format, and in part due to a Q and A session that is outside the regular public hearing format, sometimes for the purpose of eliciting information publicly available prior to the hearing. I would ask participants to please keep comments brief, and of course, feel free to state questions you have for the record, but allow the Board to fulfill their role in eliciting additional detail in the questions from the Board portion of the hearing. And I thank you for your understanding. We do proceed with public comment until all raised hands are exhausted and all those who wish to be heard are heard. Once all public comments have been heard, that portion of the hearing is closed, and we move on to the aforementioned questions from the Board. The Board, often inspired by public comments, will then question the applicant or the applicant's representatives to draw out additional detail needed in the decision-making process. Once the Board is exhausted their questioning, I will close that portion of the hearing and move on to deliberations. But deliberations in a public forum is another cornerstone of the public hearing format. Everything the Board discusses about the application is done in public or virtual public, so that all in attendance get to hear the thought processes, processes and discussions of each member and of the Board as a whole as it moves towards its collective decision. During that process, it's sometimes because evidence that the Board feels it needs more information or that the Board is leaning in opposition for one reason or another. The Board can then move to continue the application until it can obtain the desired information. Or if a denial of the application is looking like a possible outcome, the Board often gives the applicant the opportunity to request a continuance to address the Board's concerns at a future date in a future public hearing before the deliberations close and the Board proceeds to a formal vote, which would then have consequences for the applicant with respect to timing and cost going forward. Once deliberations are complete, excuse me, and no continuance has been requested, we'll then seek a motion from the Board, and when seconded, we'll call for a vote on the motion. Because we use Robert's Rules of Order, you will hear a motion on the application made in the affirmative or to approve, even if the Board member making the motion plans to deny. With four votes in the affirmative and application is approved, I will then close that application and move on to the next hearing on the agenda, applying all the same rules. When all the applications on the agenda are heard and addressed, I will close public hearings portion, and the Board will move into a business meeting to approve the minutes from our last meeting and to address any other items appropriate for that form. All right, I've called the roll. We have a quorum, and I'm off my soapbox. So let's move forward with the public hearings. Before we move with our first item on the agenda, of course, there's a curve ball in here. With the Board's permission, because we have our last item tonight on the agenda is a request for a continuance, I would just like to address Nine Woodland Street. I believe the applicant has asked for a continuance to the three twenty-three meeting. And would kind of like to knock this off before we go back to the top of the agenda. So that said, two thousand and twenty-one dash ten variance for Nine Woodland Street. Is an applicant here that wishes to be heard on this? Okay, hearing none.
Yep. I'm here. Sorry.
Okay.
This is Chris Offe here. Good evening. Yeah, I just just wanted to say that I was here and I am requesting a continuance. Waiting to hear back from my architect on kind of the best course action. But thanks for thanks for reviewing my application.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mr. Offe here. Yeah, I just didn't want anyone that might be here that wasn't aware that you were looking for continuance to be hanging around to the end of the meeting here. So with that said, we have a request for continuance to the three twenty-three meeting. Do we have a motion?
This is Ken Swanton. I'll make the motion. I move that we continue the variance application for Nine Woodland Street file two thousand and twenty-one dash ten to the March twenty-third, twenty-one meeting.
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mr. Swanton, seconded by Ms. Webb. To continue this matter to three twenty-three meeting, I'll now take a vote. Mr. Delisle.
Yeah.
I heard that. Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. Jagnon.
Yes.
And Mr. Morris says yes, all in the affirmative. So application is continued to three twenty-three. Thank you. Okay, now back to the top. Top of the agenda now is Caswell Development care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman and Costa for twenty-seven Hancock Street and also twenty-one, twenty-five Hancock Street. We have addressed these together in the past. It's for two thousand and twenty-one dash zero-two, dash zero-three and dash zero-four. Special permit for nonconformities to renovate and add to an existing home is the oh-two. Oh, for a special permit to allow a two-family home and oh-three is to also allow a two-family home. For a little recap or summary of development, the properties are located in the R two zoning district. The properties were adjacent to the rail trail on the South End. The applicant at the last meeting described the complete nature of the development. There were some concerns voiced with the size of the buildings, the landscape plans were incomplete, et cetera. And there was a continuance made to tonight's meeting. So with that said, might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman, Costa thirty Green Street, and you report on behalf of Caswell Development. And with me here this evening is Jake Caswell, the manager of Caswell Development, and Eileen Graff, who is the architect on the project. As the Chair suggested, we were here at the last meeting. And for twenty-one to twenty-five Hancock Street, we seek a special permit for use only. And at twenty-seven Hancock Street, we seek a special permit for use and a special permit to modify pre-existing non-conforming structure. At the last hearing, and I would like to kind of correct one thing that maybe that was said by the Chair. We didn't necessarily have an incomplete landscape plan. This Board doesn't require landscape plans, but the Board wanted to see more landscaping given what was being presented. And so the applicant, given the nature of the project next to the rail trail, agreed to go back and do that. Additionally, the applicant heard the comments from the Board regarding the length of the structure, in particular at twenty-one to twenty-five Hancock Street. Now Eileen is going to talk a little bit about that in a minute. I do want to point out that the applicant, if you go to the next slide, Andy. The applicant also immediately after the last meeting met with the Chair of the Parks Commission, the manager of the City Parks, the project manager for the rail trail, and the head of the Tree Commission, all in order to consolidate their comments on the landscaping plan. All of those comments have been included in the landscaping plan that Eileen is going to go over in a minute. And they have all approved the landscaping plan. The one caveat is that Jordy Vining wants to see before this is all finalized specifically with the planning board that the sizes of the various plants be incorporated into the plan, notwithstanding what's been represented. So before we go through these details that you have here, we're going to actually slide down to slide seven, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Eileen, and she can talk a little bit about the changes that have been made.
Thank you, Lisa. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Board. If actually, well, this, I'll leave it at the site plan. I was going to say we could switch to the landscape plan, but this is representative of where some of our design efforts have been since we were last in front of you. And if we look to the left, that's twenty-one, twenty-five Hancock first. We really focused the design effort to concern, to address the concerns about length. And one of the first moves we did was detached the lower unit, the lower, the corner closest to the church, say, in the northern corner to help detach and give some air and some light between the buildings. It does, it was pushed towards the back of the property, the property line. So now you could see that twenty-six point four in dimension off the left property line. And that was helping to just alleviate and lessen the sort of length of that building. We squeezed where we could in other areas, and in the end, we were able to reduce the length from the original hundred and twenty-three, and we are, and it is now down to ninety-three feet in length from Hancock Street down towards Levitt Court to the bottom of Levitt Court. Then on twenty-seven Hancock, likewise, in an effort to address some of the length, we were able to squeeze it down from instead of a hundred and sixteen in linear feet, it's now a hundred and thirteen. With, there were a little bit more challenges with this. We have the historic structure there, which became part of the discussion at our last meeting. And we spent some time focusing on that original structure. We wanted to expose it a little bit more. You will see a change in how the building connects to the original structure, more of it being exposed, say, on the northeastern side. So that now we have also, on the second level, removed any concern there was about roofline change. That was sort of another discussion happening within the regarding the historic structure. So now the second floor plan no longer connects on that upper level from the front of the house to the, which is the new construction, to the original structure. And there's an internal stair instead that connects to that upper level space. Therefore, again, removing the question that anything is happening to the original structure. All four walls of the original structural role remain, as well as all of the roof rafters. And then the two structures to the, say, to the top and to the bottom are gently attaching on the sides. And then actually, if we switch to floor plan, this might be better demonstrated in A O one, Andy, if we could.
You say A O one?
A O one, if you could. It should be the first floor plan for
It's a little further down.
Okay, great. Thank you. So again, this is the first floor plan of twenty-seven Hancock. And you can see where in the bottom of the page where I've defined the existing structure. What I want to note is that we made design efforts again to try to expose more of the original structure. The yellow, the unit below the blue, or it's the left of blue, is now pushed back. And you could see the dimension line there of twelve feet, so that along that length on the left side, we have more of the structure showing. And likewise, we did the same on the right side of that original structure, and now it's exposing five feet. If you now switch to A O two, you could see it at the second level and how it attaches. And one thing I want to comment on is that where that twelve-foot dimension line was on the left, I just want to point out that now on the second floor, since we are abutting on the left side with just a one and a half-story structure, a lot more of the second floor of the original structure, a second floor wall is exposed. And so on the first floor, it was twelve feet that was exposed. And on the second floor, it says, I'm sorry that the dimension line was not put there, but I have it as reference. It's seventeen feet on that left side. So again, more of the second story of that wall is exposed. And on the right side now, likewise, with the gable end connecting to the structure, as it creeps away, it's now eight feet in length that is exposed to the Hancock Street elevation and trying to really sort of let that original structure stay as pure on the gable line as possible. Both the short ends are not interrupted in any way of any structure and such. So those have and remain untouched or non-attached to. And so then, actually, if we could shift to, sorry, before we leave this, I'll comment back to the second floor plan again. As you can see, it's called out as a loft. This space will be accessed strictly by an internal stair within the original structure, and that can serve for the houses, some overflow space, whether it's a rec room or an office, et cetera. But we no longer are making a connection from where you can see the laundry, a buttsit and a closet that we have eliminated any form of connection there. So again, all of the roof rafters remain intact, and there is no change in the roof line. Simply overlaying the rafters that you see on that diagonal and the triangle shapes, that's an overlay of some roof connection. And then now, if we could switch to the landscape plan, Andy.
It's eight, maybe, Andy?
Great. You're fast, Andy. All right. So as Lisa had mentioned, we've worked with the city and with neighbors to come up with this landscape plan and to address everybody's concerns. To start with, we have the five trees that line Hancock Street and five pretty significant trees. There's yellowwood there, elm, tulip tree. One comment Kim Turner had made is that those tulip trees were something that we're really trying to bring back more of in the city. So those five will line Hancock Street. The applicant Jay is willing to place these on his property in order to have more success and their growth, and then lessen the damage that they could cause, say, in the sidewalks and such. So now they have nice, comfortable room to grow. Along with that is the, sorry, prior to that is the removal of two existing Norway maples that are on the sort of southern side of the property closer to twenty, right in front of twenty-seven and closer to twenty-nine Hancock. And those will be removed in order for these trees to get placed, but also in an effort to improve the sidewalks. So they will be removing resetting the granite curbing that exists. Likewise, we'll be installing brick sidewalk for the length of the, in front of these properties, twenty-one, all the way to twenty-seven. Then, as you turn the corner on the rail trail side, this is where a significant amount of the plantings is happening. There are some more significant trees proposed in there, maple, yellowwood, and then on the northernmost corner are the spruce, but they have that's the higher level of plantings. And on the lower level, there's an assortment of roadies, of winter berry by Burnham. And that has been placed in in, in sort of a double-layer effect to try to, again, meeting everybody's concerns and needs for that budding property and how the rail trail is experienced. With the, Jay has agreed to remove any of the invasive plantings that currently exist. And after all these plantings are done, that area will be mulched in their beds. As you can see, on the right side of the property, to address some concerns of the neighbor, as we had mentioned last time, you'll see the arboviti lining the fence line there, the six-foot privacy fence, as well as some larger tree on that side, a conservatory, and then heading down to the driveway that with the removal of the existing street tree, we are now able to give more garden zone to allow for a a row of boxwood or holly along that edge to give some definition between the two properties and the two driveways. So that is the landscape plan. And then if we could scroll to maybe the first of the renderings, Andy.
So I think they follow a photograph, perhaps, Andy, that would be towards the end.
Great. And so here, it sort of pulls everything together, the architecture, the landscape, trying to give you a better feel for what the changes will be in the neighborhood. And as you can see here, it's the beginnings of these street trees along Hancock. And likewise, going down that split rare fence is the experience going down towards the rail trail. And you can see the different heights and different levels. And also, there was attention to different seasonal plantings as well. And then if we go to the next rendering, a little closer on that same corner, again, looking more down towards twenty-seven, but following along Hancock. And so you could again follow the sidewalk, the brick sidewalk would all be all cleaned up. And then you could see the opening to the introduced formalized Levitt Court. And then the next rendering. This is from the rail trial side. It's a little bit deceptive because it's kind of elevated in its view, but trying to give more perspective to to more of the property. You could see glimmers of twenty-seven on the left-hand side. And then again, the detached garage, which is behind these spruce trees. And then as you travel up towards Hancock, the continuation of Unit C and D and C following up the trail. And then lastly, this is the view from Hancock Street, looking towards the rail trail and mostly in front of twenty-seven. And you could see glimmers of the changes that happened on twenty-one, twenty-five by detaching the garage and being able to push it back. It helps to reduce the sort of overall scale of the building in that view. But I think that using these renderings is a good way to sort of show how the combination of these architectural footprint changes in combination with the landscape plan has helped to create a residential addition in this rather empty or void corner. I see it as something that brings more texture to the street that sort of completes this empty corner. And I think that that this, these, these changes and the landscape plan proposed are all such nice details to what seems to be a rather, a rather empty and unmanaged lot at the moment. So thank you to drive that home, that all of this will be improved and helping support the neighborhood feel and texture of the South End. So that's all I have for comments on the architectural changes, but I'm happy to answer any questions as they come along. And I can pass it back to Lisa now.
Thank you very much. And if you could go back up to the site plan, please. I think that's slide seven, maybe six or seven.
Yeah, do you want the landscape plan or the site plan?
The landscape plan's fine. You can hold it here because I think there is some evidence of what I'm going to talk about. So thank you very much, Eileen. I think that that was really helpful. And obviously, a lot of work has happened in the last couple of weeks. I would just like to point out to the Board that a lot of these plantings at the request of the city are happening on city property. And the cleanup of the city property, obviously, benefits the property owners here, but wouldn't necessarily otherwise occur. I venture to say that there's not many, if any, other places along the rail trail where the adjacent property owner has done so many plantings and the cleanup as well. So I think that the cooperative effort between all of those folks related to the rail trail and the Parks Commission and the applicant is really evident in these plans, which neither party would have had to participate in. I would also be remiss if I didn't point out that to the Board that the current lot coverage at twenty-one to twenty-five from the nonconforming building, which you can kind of see outlined in the background there, is twenty-two point three percent. And the proposed lot coverage is twenty-two point five percent. So the required lot coverage is no more than twenty-five. So there's just a teeny bit of increased lot coverage. But importantly, the current open space is forty-six point seven percent, or a minimum of forty percent is required. That's because much of this lot, twenty-one to twenty-five in particular, is covered by hot top, not Levitt Court, but other hot top, given its prior use. The open space for this lot goes up to sixty-seven percent with this proposal. And I think that's a really important factor, the cleanup that's going to occur on this property as part of the change of use is really important to point out. As to twenty-seven Hancock, again, I think it's important to point out the changes that were made. The landscaping now added here is important and was necessary to be shown. We've got sign-offs from the City Tree Commission, as well as a DPW related to the sidewalk. And I think that that is important as well. The current lot coverage on this lot is five percent, but no other lot in this district has five percent lot coverage. In fact, that's an aberration in Hancock Street or anywhere around here to have five percent lot coverage. What's being proposed is actually much more consistent with the neighborhood generally. And if you could go to slide four, please. And I included these. I'm just going to kind of slide through these because I think this question came up at the last meeting. So we're asking for two-family use on both of these lots. And then, of course, on twenty-seven, we're asking for a modification to pre-existing nonconforming structure. And there was a question that arose relative to what, essentially, what's the density in the rest of this area? And so I'm just going to point out a couple of things on here. The other two-family uses, so keep in mind, both of these lots include over sixteen thousand square feet of area. And they're going to have a two-family use. So at one to one and a half Hancock, there's two units on there. It's five thousand, six hundred and nineteen square feet. At six Hancock, there's two units, six thousand, three hundred and ninety square feet. At seventy-nine Hancock, there's two units at two thousand, nine hundred and seventy square feet. At ten Hancock, two units, seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-three square feet. Eleven Hancock, two units, four thousand, six hundred and twenty-four square feet. At eight Lund Street, two units, five thousand, four hundred and forty square feet. Twenty-eight Hancock, two units, five thousand, four hundred and forty square feet. Thirty-six to forty-two Madison, that's on the corner. That's a multi-family. Eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety square feet. Forty Marlboro, two units, eleven thousand, three hundred and eighty. And of course, as you get towards Marlboro, the lots get a little bit bigger, but still undersized compared to A, the requirement, and B, what our lots have. So I go through that, and we provided a lot of information here, but the basic information is that So I go through that and we provided a lot of information here, but the basic information is that these two units actually meet the dimensional requirements, but for the front yard setback, which is existing off of Levitt Court, than the rest of the lots in the neighborhood. And so it is actually conforming, whereas everything else is nonconforming and certainly is not over overly dense. So we would ask that since the last meeting, we've provided to the board how lot twenty one to twenty five meets the two family use. That's the only thing we're here for on twenty one to twenty five is a request to allow a two family use on that property. And we went through the special permit criteria at the last meeting, and I believe that the applicant has satisfied that criteria and happy to run through it again. And on twenty one, excuse me, twenty seven, we asked the board to approve the two family use again on that lot, as well as modifying the preexisting nonconforming structure as proposed. I remind the board that almost every neighbor spoke in favor of this project. I asked the board to consider a number of conditions, which now are represented on these plans. And deference to the neighbor immediately at twenty nine Hancock Street. I'm happy to repeat those again if the board needs them. And so I would ask the board approve what I would think that most people in the South End and certainly the people in the neighborhood believe to be something that's an improvement to this area and certainly consistent with the rest of the district and neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Mead, and and thank you, Ms. Graff, for that that update and thorough show of plans. With that done, now we're going to turn to public comment now. And again, I'm going to remind everyone to raise your hand electronically and wait to be recognized by Andy Port. And don't forget to unmute yourself once you call and state your name and address, please.
Okay, first person we have is Tom Colter John. You'll have to unmute on your end as well. Are you there, Tom? Tom, can you hear us?
It's like his mic is a
Yeah, it looks like his mic's connected, but Tom, we can't hear anything from you. I don't know if there's anyone else that is interested in raising their hand. We can circle back. Okay, I'm gonna move to Kim Quint for a moment.
There we go. Great. Again, as with the meeting two weeks ago, this is Rob Jorgensen, the co-owner with Ken Quinn at seventy Purchase Street. We're a butters on Purchase Street. Can you hear me? Sorry. This is still new to me, this Zoom stuff. Last time I talked about the concerns of not just ourselves, but I think I mentioned reaching, starting to reach out to Purchase Street of Butters. And the continued the the concerns for the stormwater management, those concerns still continue with us all. Tonight, though, I want to speak more to my personal concern for the scale of these structures, which has been talked about extensively now. And one thing that was just mentioned is that the, I think in the closing a minute ago, that the neighbors are largely in favor of this project. Well, I don't think anyone on Purchase Street has been reached out to. So we've not been, it's nothing, nothing's been communicated with us other than the invite to join these. So therefore, that's worth. I largely appreciate the effort that's been put into trying to address these skillish scale issues. I understand they're terribly difficult. What's not coming through with the current round of drawings is that by separating the garage from the C and D units, that's never illustrated on any of the any of the elevation drawings that have been presented. So it's hard to gauge what the overall in what the overall takeaway would be visually by separating that garage. You still have a large, essentially one single structure. Yes, you've got some airspace in there. It's minimal, I'm guessing by eyeballing plans and elevations, maybe five feet. So it's a minimal space. Yes, it's something. But the scale, the the size of these units are still very self evident. They mathematically work by the numbers. But the spirit of these structures, not much has been really discussed about that. And some of the things I'd like to talk about are the fact that you've got essentially still the same dynamic at work. You have two long structures that feed off each other's scale and visual vocabulary to reinforce anything positive about one or the other and also the negative. So if there is an issue with scale, which I contend there is still, by having two of these things really becomes sort of otherworldly. I can't think of another occurrence in this under town where this sort of mirrored thing is going on. And I think that's part of the issue. Another thing, just some 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 side notes. The architectural illustrations, the other thing that's missing here is there are no human beings drawn in for reference for scale. And I would submit that if they were included at this stage of the game, it would really help illustrate the scale problem at hand. So let me leave it at that. Essentially, the design concerns that I have, along with the continued reservations for the stormwater plans. You know, I think one one gentleman last week said, just take a look at the, in so many words, take a look at the storm drains where the rail trail, which is a heavily, heavily studied, planned, blah, 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 project. Where that crosses Purchase Street, those drains don't work most of the time. And we're not even talking about draining that large an area. So if we have, anyway, that the drainage just remained a concern, the scale issue is obviously ongoing, in my opinion. And as such, I oppose to the approval of the special permits in question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jorgensen for the
I forgot one one point. This indeed is a precedent setting decision. I believe Lisa mentioned last week, yes, there are large parcels remaining in the South End, Purchase Street included. And I beg that this be considered carefully. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks.
All right, who's up? Anyone who's next on the list?
Tom, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me? Oh, great. Tom Colter John, sixty four Federal Street, co-president of the Newburyport Preservation Trust. The trust still opposes this project. They have only made minor changes on this massive project. Frankly, it's disappointing. The historic building at twenty seven Hancock is still obliterated. It is no longer recognizable. Twenty seven Hancock was a typical house on the street, and now it's gone. You see a tiny bump out from that original house if you walk down Hancock. The project overall is Hello? Hello?
All right, someone someone needs to be
The project overall is still too massive for the street and doesn't fit in with the historic neighborhood. Separating out one set of garages and shortening the other long building by three feet does not go far enough. It is a token gesture. This project still needs some serious changes. This project should strive for more cohesion, cohesiveness, not isolation. This project sort of faces itself and sort of isolates itself from Hancock. By creating a more densely used court, it creates a new identity cut off from the existing neighborhood. I think that's a terrible idea. We need more good cohesive neighborhoods. It needs a more consistent architectural theme that is in harmony with the historic architecture on Hancock. This project bears no resemblance to what has been on this street and is a detriment to the neighborhood. It is much too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colter John. Who do we have next that wishes to be heard?
Next person is Stephanie Nikicich.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Nikicich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Nikicich, ninety three High Street. I I just will agree with Mr. Jorgensen and Mr. Colter John. I think both of their comments were useful and and correct. And just to note that the applicant has said, this is only a special permit for use as though you don't have any other decisions that you can make in such an application. But in fact, you do, and I think you're already aware of them. They were discussed at your last hearing. And I hope, because also this requires major site plan review, that you might you might wait to hear what your colleagues on the planning board think about this before you make your own decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We still have a hand raised, it looks like.
Next person is John Growitz.
Hi, thank you. John Growitz, one forty nine Merrimack Street. I just want to address a few of the things that have been said. I was online for the previous meeting, and I think that there's been a lot of careful attention in detail paid to both the plan as far as showing the landscaping and design. I I think another thing that people need to, I've sold houses on the street, I'm a Realtor, and you know, the comment that was just made that there's nothing like this. I I would I would say that you're correct, but I would state as you drive down Hancock Street, there are many houses that are right on lot lines. There was a pre standing condominiums that were done probably about, you know, six or seven years ago, as you turn onto Hancock Street that, you know, I find to be almost menacing. So both the detail that's been played to the design in this project, the fact that this lot sits lower, so as you're walking by, you know, what I would say to the gentleman who commented, there's no people drawn in. All you have to do is walk by and see where this lot sits. The fact that the height of these buildings has not been maximized, once you have mature plantings, it's going to be a very pretty project and it's going to be a great addition to that street. That's been a huge eyesore for a long, long time. So I think we should all consider how much better this is going to look as far as the historical content is concerned. I'm very happy with what historical does in this town, and I think a lot of things been preserved that were necessary. But we get a little bit into the, you know, little boy who cried wolf when we take a look at any structure that is old and say that it needs to be saved. Quite frankly, that house could be picked up and put down in a Pennsylvania coal mining town. And no one, it wouldn't skip a beat. I don't think that it's necessarily representative of anything that's cohesive on Hancock. And I'd make the argument that at this point, it's nothing more than an eyesore. So I look forward to seeing this project come to fruition. I think it will be good for the South End. It will be great for Hancock Street and in general, it will be great for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Growitz. Still have a couple of, well, I think that we still have hands up, but
Yeah, just Tom called it done. I know we, you spoke a moment ago. I'm not sure if that's a raised hand still left up, perhaps.
And now it's now.
Okay, no further comment then.
All right. Thank you, everyone. With public comment complete, we will go into questions from the board. And I'll start off with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would
Mr. Mr. Delisle, you you do you sound really weak? I don't know if it's just me, but the volume is
Maybe it's just me. I don't know. Is that a little better?
That is, that is.
So I I do have a few questions for Ms. Graff. I was wondering if you could kind of walk us through the two buildings and just kind of explain a little bit about what the materials are that are going to be used on the exterior, just to kind of add some sort of some detail there for for the board members.
Sure, Ken. So so on the buildings and using this elevation here, you have some horizontal siding. So that is shown in a wider board length there on the top drawing. And then on showing the more vertical delineations on the right, there's a banding right at the sill of the windows of the second floor. That is of the board and batten style. What I want to point out, and it might help for some of the butters and trying to understand some scale. While the renderings may not have, say, a human shown or a car shown, there is simply just the use of of a door, showing this front door to help demonstrate sort of floor by floor. If you can imagine that second floor of the three windows, if if you can imagine that roof line is pushed down, again, I touched on this a little bit at the last meeting, that roof line is pushed down intentionally with the idea that there wasn't any plans for any third floor space in 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 this volume as a way to, as a design effort to bring the scale down. So while there's discussion about scale, again, using that twenty seven foot building height, that's that's an average because on the lower part of the slope, it's a little bit taller. So really, again, referencing the thirty five foot length in which is our building height restriction in our city. We're 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 pretty far from that. And again, trying to sort of be respectful of the volume in height for the neighborhood. So hopefully that answers to the scale vertically. And then going back to more siding delineations, it's really, Mr. Delisle, it is a continuation of areas of vertical siding of the shiplap and then the horizontal boarding. There are some moments, and you'll see it in somewhat of a gray, like this bay on the top left drawing, and then there's a bay window on the bottom right. That's with the potential that there might be possibly some that is natural, possibly is what meaning versus a versus a solid color. So that's what those toned areas could possibly be. And that's a continuation. Okay.
Yeah, okay, that's some good detail. And the material, is the material a natural product or or is that decided yet?
It's it's likely, it's likely going to be a that there's these cement tissue products that are great for these hard hard New England winters, and they last longer than the natural wood. But that it they appear to be a wood, and they're used commonly throughout our city.
Okay. Thank you. Another further sort of clarification from last week, I'd like to pose the question to to Mr. Caswell again. I know last week I asked you and you took us through the the stormwater issue, and I'm wondering if you could just explain that again, maybe a little bit more briefly, but just to explain again how I think last week or, excuse me, last meeting, the 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 concept was that there's not going to be water sort of migrating off this property onto the the Purchase Street properties.
Jay, are you available? So while he
Yeah, Jay's unmuted. I'm not sure if he's able to mute himself. I
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to 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 spring a crap on anyone there. Maybe I'll I'll redirect that to
I think that's fine, just if I could, this is any No, no, I think that's fine. Just if I could, this is any port, planning director. I think Jay's going to answer the question, but I just, to be brief about it, the planning board has a review of Levitt Court that they'll be doing under the regulations here in Newburyport. So the typical review process is that the board's peer review consultant looks at the stormwater management for that new paved area. And as long as they sign off on how that is being dealt with, there's agreement as part of that process that there's no additional peak flows or anything onto anybody's adjacent property. So bottom line is, there is a review process for that that will be done by the planning board specifically. But I think Jay may want to speak to it as applicant.
Yep, am I unmuted?
Yes.
You are. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I kind of got into it a little bit too far probably last time. So they do a calculation of how much is permeable, how much is unpermeable, and we have to control. They do, engineers do calculations of how much stormwater we have to handle. Mass state law dictates that you cannot dump your stormwater on anybody else's property. That's a statewide law. So we're going to be under direct scrutiny by the planning board. That's where their purview is, and we'll have to show like retention areas, how much is purview. They take into account the roof lines, the asphalt and everything else. And that's, that's where it all goes to peer review at the planning board level. So our engineers do calc's, they send it off to the city engineers, they check their calc's. At the end of the day, they make sure that no stormwater that comes off goes on anyone else's property.
And I would add, Jay, that while there's certainly some increase in impervious surface on 27, there's a significant reduction on 21 to 25, and none of it right now has any stormwater facilities. And it will all have the appropriate stormwater facilities.
I mean, quite frankly, if they're having problems with this site right now on Purchase Street, I mean, that's all prior to the purchase that I'm going to be making. I'd just like to put everyone's mind at ease that if they are having water flow problems because it drops down, I, you know, that's all been there. It'll all be addressed. And if there is an issue, it'll be completely alleviated because I have to. And there's no choice in it, so.
Thank you both. I think that's really helpful on that particular issue. Mr. Moore, that's the extent of my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Move on. Questions from Ms. Rachel Webb.
Thank you. I'm looking at the staff report, and there was a comment about how, let's see, that the Office of Planning is awaiting a written opinion from the city solicitor regarding the destruction of the building's exterior walls and so forth. Andy, you want to comment on that?
Sure. Just briefly, the gist of it, I think, was discussed at the last board meeting. It was brought up that there was a question about the, whether or not the zoning determination that was issued by the zoning administrator, whether that needed to be revised because in fact, the plans that are shown here might trigger the demolition control overlay district threshold for needing a D-Cod or demolition control overlay district special permit. So that question is being reviewed right now by the zoning administrator with legal counsel. The assumption was we would circle back. Unfortunately, we were not able to do that prior to this meeting. So, you know, we're assuming a continuance of this hearing that would allow us to close that loop. So, but that really comes down to, if you look at the structure on the right there, just the original historic structure with the two new additions on it, is the, in the finer grain details of the ordinance language, is that a trigger for a D-Cod special permit in terms of demolition or destruction or the other terminology in that section of the ordinance?
So would your office be recommending then that we continue this application until we get that recommendation from counsel?
It would make sense to me to do that. I think that's more efficient for everybody, frankly. You know, the office notes that the planning board still has to look at the Levitt Court aspect of this project. Not that I foresee any issues in the approval of that Levitt Court or the stormwater management for it. These are all things that I've routinely seen reviewed and approved previously. But that suggests that there is time to address, you know, in the next week or two, close the loop on the D-Cod special permit question, just so that everybody has comfort that what is being approved here, these plans are actually the plans that will stand rather than debating whether or not they might need to be revised to address the need for a D-Cod special permit, which would then force the board, the applicant, and others to sort of cycle back again. So to us, it would be more efficient for everybody to continue this hearing. If all other issues are addressed to the board's satisfaction, continue for that aspect. If there's something else that's outstanding, then to address that as well. I just want to note for the record that I think it's good that the landscape plan has been provided by the applicant. They've clearly closed the loop there on the other aspect of whether or not the project is more or less detrimental to the neighborhood. So I think that's a good aspect of this updated revision to this project. But the only outstanding issue from my perspective is that D-Cod special permit inquiry, the rest of it, I think, is the board's discretion as to, you know, the typical criteria in the ordinance.
Thank you. I guess I'd like to commend the applicant for, you know, reworking this to the extent that they have since the last ZBA meeting. It's going to be a project of, you know, very high visibility from the rail trail. And, you know, this has been stated, it currently, you know, is a neighborhood eyesore, and this is a tremendous improvement. I just question the attached garages, just adding to the overall massing. I think I brought up this point last time that I wondered if, you know, if the garages were separated, if it would just, you know, how it would just reduce the overall scale of the residential part of the development. And it is, you know, it's a development of four units total to have detached garages. I know it may not be as desirable in new construction, but it may be more historically accurate. I know I have a two-car detached garage in my home, and I live in the North End. It's an old house, so. I don't know. I just raised that as a point of discussion. I don't know if the architects or the developers had considered detached garages.
Mr. Chair, if I could respond to Ms. Webb's comments.
Go right ahead.
So I want to take, I certainly appreciate your comments, Rachel, because a lot of work has gone into the project. But I do want to point out something and take issue with a comment that Ms. Nikic made earlier related to 21 to 25 Hancock Street. We are here for a special permit for use. And the review of the use within the special permit criteria does not go to design, with all due respect. The fact of the matter is, the applicant could put a single-family home on this property within the setbacks, within the dimensional requirements, and it could be huge. It could be bigger than this home by, you know, whatever, however big, right? And it could be 35 feet tall and wouldn't have to do any work to upgrade the rail trail. He could do it with a building permit, period. That's it. And that's not what he's choosing to do. He's choosing to get a special permit for use for two families, which is consistent with the neighborhood. And while I know that the board would like to review the design on 21 to 25, and the fact of the matter is that it does go with the 27 Hancock Street. The issue related to massing and size is an issue under special permit for non-conformities, not under special permit for use. And so I think the applicant has done a significant amount of work to try to reduce the massing and the length of that wall. They would like to have the garages attached. They have detached one garage off of this to reduce that length. And there's significant run down Levitt Court. The current building on this site is horrific. The condition of the building and the project, excuse me, the property is horrific and bad for the environment and bad as a neighbor to the rail trail. We're asking for a special permit for use, 21 to 25. That can't be converted into design review. You can have all the comments in the world about design enassing on 27. I cannot argue that you can't do that. But I don't see anywhere in the criteria for special permit for use that there is a review of the design enassing.
Thank you. Turn to me. Ms. Webb, any more questions?
Let's see. I think that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Swanton, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. And if you could put up the slide eight, I think the landscaping slide, I had one question on that. It's very helpful to see this, you know, given the, how visible this is and what a large lot this is left, this left in the South End. It's nice, nice. I appreciate you showing this. I realize this is not something you generally show the zoning board of appeals. I guess my question is, it's tough to plant trees that big. What are we looking at? Are we looking at where the trees will be now or 10 years from now or 20 years from now? I'm just trying to get a sense of what are we looking at with this picture?
So I'm going to let Eileen answer much of that. Mr. Swanton, it's a really good question. Of course, you, of course, those trees, you're not going to see canopies to that size. But so the street trees we're going to plant at what the city street tree ordinance requires and the street tree commission is, I believe that it's two- to three-inch caliper at chest height, which is a pretty good-sized tree. It's about a, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Eileen, but it's between a 15- and 20-foot tall tree when it's planted, when you have three-inch, two- to three-inch caliper at chest height. So those would be the ones along the street there. And then, Eileen, I don't know if, I know that Jordy and them talked about caliper, and we're going to add them to a plan later for the ones along the rail trail, but maybe you can add to them.
That's correct. And so I have to laugh a little bit too because I, Lisa, when you're deferring to me because I have to say, this is, I confess, this is my first landscape drawing, and I did it in an effort to help the plan be submitted to the zoning board. Mike Hathaway provided the hand-sketch drawing, but we needed to make changes, working with the city on different things that were added, and it was just fastest that I produced it. But nonetheless, the only thing that I could explain is I do know scale, and I know that when I recreated Mike's drawing, hand-sketch drawing, I know the scale of what's shown here, and I could tell you, say, from the bottom right, that is a 40-foot canopy that's showing, 35-foot around there. The ones anchoring Levitt Court are about 30. What I can't tell you, Mr. Swanton, is I have to assume when they draw these, these are of the maturity level. But nonetheless, this is the typical landscape drawing that they provide. So I hope that helps answer it. And, you know, the low-level growth, that, you know, those scale of those are about 10 feet, 12 feet shown in its diameter. And then going to those Norway spruce in the upper north corner, those are also about 28, 30 feet in diameter as well.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, I know. I appreciate. I don't want to dwell on it. But I just think it's important to realize a tree that's two to three inches in diameter takes a long time to get this big.
Yeah, and if I could, Mr. Swanton, and you're absolutely correct, but it also, you don't want to plant them too big because then they, they're not healthy, which is why the street tree commission does what they do. But the calipers will all be reviewed by those same five people that I listed earlier before it's finalized with the planning board.
Right. Now I get it. I guess my next question, you mentioned the planning board. I mean, this project, I think it's been said a couple of times here, obviously requires the planning board to look at things. And this is your second visit here to the zoning board of appeals. Have you been, have you yet had a first visit with the planning board?
No, we haven't. We're scheduled, I think, the first meeting in April, Mr. Swanton. So we applied to the planning board. That's when they could fit us on the agenda we were supposed to be on next week, but, or in, yeah, a week from Wednesday. But that's a pretty full agenda, so they moved us to their first meeting in April. But you have to start somewhere, right? So if we don't get the special permits for use from you, or know that that's what's going to occur, you know, the applicant, there's a lot of money that's spent at the planning board, and we have begun that process.
Yeah, I get that. I guess my next question is related to the planning board. I mean, you're drawing your frontage, a lot of your frontage for these houses off of that Levitt Court. And I guess I'm a little confused. I look at the town zoning map. I don't see Levitt Court on the town's official zoning map. Has the planning board, I realize that was back in the 20s, some subdivision plan that was done, but has the town accepted Levitt Court as a public way? And has the planning board actually decided that we could actually view that as a place to draw frontage?
So first of all, you don't have to have a public way to have frontage. Frontage can be drawn from a private or a public way. Secondly, if you look at the assessor's maps, you'll see that in fact Levitt Court does exist on the assessor's maps, which is more important. Thirdly, it exists on a subdivision plan that was filed and recorded prior to the adoption of subdivision control law in Newburyport, and therefore it has effect. So what we're doing is having the planning board affirm that through the special permit for courts and lanes.
I'm very glad you're doing that. I think it's, I think, I think the architect mentioned you're going to formalize that. I look forward to the formalizing. I just want to make sure I understood how that works. I guess my next question has to do with scale.
Assessor's map. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, you know, I saw the assessor's map. The assessor's map, notice how it says on that map Hancock Street? And all the various streets are labeled except that one. It's the only street I can find in the South End that doesn't have a name on it. That's why I was wondering, you know, is this really a street yet, or does the planning board have to do something?
Well, so it is a private street because it was shown on a subdivision plan prior to the adoption of subdivision control law in the city of Newburyport. And if you want to take frontage on it, then you have to develop it to meet the subdivision standards and/or the courts or lane standards, which is why we are going to the planning board.
Right, I get that, and I'm glad you're going there. I just think we're a little bit out of order here. I mean, I'd like to see you get that to make it an official street. I mean, you've asked, we all kind of took a poll last meeting. We're all, I think, comfortable with putting two-family houses here. We all kind of said that. The next thing I'd like to bring up is scale. You know, I looked at what you had here, and I said to myself, gee, I hope somewhere in the presentation she compares this to what they had last time because I'm curious if the buildings got smaller, how much they got smaller. I didn't see it, so I developed my own little, you know, I just compared the two sets of numbers. I sent Andy a little chart, a little very simple chart this morning. Andy, do you happen to have that? Because I just had a question about how this compares to what you had last time. So in this little page here, I just looked at what you proposed on February 23rd. You had houses totaling about 11,900 square feet and garages and totaling 14. Now we're looking on March 9th at a set of plans, and actually, they've all gotten bigger, which I don't quite understand because when I look at the minutes that we're going to propose, approve tonight for the meeting of February 23rd, the majority of all of us on the zoning board of appeals had concerns not just about length but about scale. And the scale of this project has actually grown, so I don't quite get it. What am I missing?
So I can speak to that in regards to scale. So we touched on this at the last meeting as well, and what elements contribute to assessing scale? That could be length, that could be height, that could be volume, right? So there were different areas that, that, say, the first time around, we tried to squeeze the buildings down in volume and height, right? And that caused a bigger spread, if you will. You know, take the same volume and push it down from the top. It's going to have a bigger footprint. So this last round was an effort to pull together, I'll talk to 21, 25 first. That one in particular took a larger sort of squeeze than 27. And detaching the garage was one effort to remove it. That, in, say, Jay's point of view, his goals that he had for some kind of living space were removed the minute you detached it, right? So while we detached that garage, we needed to recover some square footage. So yes, there is more. We pulled everything together. The last sort of bulk of 25, the back part of the living space, you'll see is a little bit bigger in footprint, a little bit more bulbous, if you will. And and that happened just to make it more compact. But at the same time, we lost square footage in doing so. So we we pushed up. So we'll see it in floor plan. I can push to that next. But what I'm trying to explain is that is the only unit that ended up having a third floor. And and that's internally driven for goals for what kind of spaces he wants in this in these residences. So again, we lost, we lost footprint. We're down to 93 there. But there's a balance out. So does that read, you know, it again, it's the argument scale, you know, is it height, length? What? It's a combination of all of those things that you've mentioned that we've all talked about. So, you know, you know, there are efforts in disconnecting roofs on 27 to help play with some of these volumes to help visually separate them. I mean, ideally, of course, we'd love to have two separate structures here. The reality is, it's a 2,900, 3,000. That's the average, but in all these four units. That's, that is not extreme in square footage, given the neighborhood. We're not on the high side. We're not on the low side. We're somewhere in the middle with that. There's, there's a property down the road that's 6,000 square feet on on the end of Hancock. So so we're clearly not that. But that's a single family, and we're feeding that with a true family. So so I hope this addresses some of that. Yes, there's a push and a pull, but it's really, again, we're taking, it's more or less the same square footage. We're, we're squeezing it in different areas. So I, so the best way to explain is we pushed it, but we kind of went up a little bit in the process.
Yeah, I just, I was just surprised, because I thought after the last meeting that we used the word squeeze, it somehow got bigger. So I just, I don't get it. I also did not see on the slides that were presented as 6,000 foot residence. I mean, I don't you know, I, we're saying, we are supposed to consider scale here, and most of the members describe scales an issue. And I'm wondering, outside of the Brown School, are we creating the largest building in the South End here? I mean, most of the buildings on the street are very small footprints compared to this. Aren't they? I mean, put the charts back up. I couldn't see a 6,000 foot one there.
Well, maybe I missed it. If I could, Mr. Swan, I don't have the total floor area on any of of my, the chart that I showed. I only show first floor area as shown on the assessors map. I don't have total floor area on that. That's not what this comparison is. I have the first floor area as compared to the building lot size. I did not put the entire the entire square footage of each of the units and or buildings.
All the ones on Hancock Street seem to be smaller than this building. No, I don't know. I, when I, I see the chart, when I walk down the street and I look around, I just don't see a building anywhere near the size. I realize it's a very large lot. So I get it that you, if you look at it as a percentage of acreage, you can kind of say, wow, it's the same. But you wind up with a very different looking building, and we are supposed to consider scale. So I, anyway, I just, since it came up so much last time, and so many people raised it, and these buildings actually are larger. I just wanted to ask, and I guess I can move on. That was my question.
I would, you know, I think that I would like to approach this in a couple of different ways. There are units close across the street that are 3,000 square feet apiece in a two family. And the I don't back to, with all due respect to the scale question, that question applies to 21 to 25, excuse me, to 27. It does not apply to 21 to 25. With all due respect, there is not one special permit criteria for use related to scale and massing.
I get that. I get that.
And so we are within, we're within the dimensional requirements. There's no FAR calculations. You know, it's an interesting thing. We talk about the size of these buildings, but you know, we're, there's no FAR calculation for a dimension requirement here. There's none. And so when we, when the person comes in, they look at setbacks, they look at height, they look at lot coverage. They look at the things that are in the zoning table, the things that they are aware of that control the district. And that's, that's what's available on this property. And actually, less than what's available on this property.
I get that. I appreciate you pointing out that it's just due to the setback, but the setback does involve half the project here, and the fact that a large, very large building is going on that lot is amplified by the fact there's one across the street that's proposed to, or across Leverett Court, that's proposed to go in. So it's just, to me, it's a scale issue that it's a concern. That's all. So I don't, those are my questions. You know, I, I guess I have no other questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chaglin, do you have any questions?
I just have one. I had some that some of the other board members brought up, and I can ask this for the applicant. Is the lot going to be raised somewhat in the, I guess it would be the northwest corner towards the rail trail? If you walk by there now, there's a little bit of a gully in there, and the renderings make it look as though from the rail trail over to, say, the garage in the rear, it looks fairly level. So is that all going to be filled in? So it is a somewhat more homogeneous, homogeneous level lot?
So I happen to have the planning board plans here. And that, that corner is right now 28,4 at 28.4, the corner of, the corner of the garage is going to be at 28.92. And the grading looks like it stays pretty much consistent. Along the rail trail, there's a little spot that's 26. And then it goes 27, 28, 29 towards the building. So it's still going to drop. There's still going to be a drop along the rail trail like it is today.
All right. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Since Mr. Bennet called in from Florida, do you have any questions that you'd like to, I think for the effort, maybe? I think you deserve. You won't be voting, but if you had any questions that you wanted to bring up?
I have no questions. I I'll defer until we have our discussions on the substance of the
Very good. Very good. Thank you. As far as questions for me, I wonder if we go back and I just a question was brought up about the the height of the newly detached garage. Do we have that information? And what the height will be on that?
That the garage?
Yeah.
Give you that. I do not have that added in there. Andy, there's one perspective that I have it. I'm sorry, it's not part of the presentation. But it is in a perspective from the rail trail to help give a scale.
Okay.
But it is tall, it is Mr. Moore, you know how in in the detached accessory structures that are closer to the property line, that they have a height restriction while we are meeting the setbacks, this structure is, has, does not get limited to the 14 foot building height requirement? Actually, one more.
Yeah, I think there was one from
lower, lower.
If you passed it and looked back at it, I think I do recall that.
Yeah. And that'll show the dormer. There, there you see it in a little bit from that side. But you can see it's a one, one, one and a, you know, one story. It has a dormer on one side.
Fair enough.
For light headroom.
Eileen, I'm sorry, was there a different image or slide that shows?
One further down on the rail trail, Andy? That might look back up.
That's the one. Ah, yeah, okay.
And that shows you the the door, the dormer side of the garage.
Just wanted to refresh.
Sure.
I think my colleagues have have covered all the other details that they may have had in questioning. So I have, I have no questions. So I think questions from the board are now closed. And we will go to deliberations. A lot in our plate here to discuss tonight. 27 Hancock is the special permit nonconformities to renovate along with the use special permit in 21, 25 correctly is is for use only. And I'll leave it at that until further deliberation. So we should have our discussions go around the the necessary data points for making decisions here while we, while we talk about this. So I'm going to kick off with Mr. Delia.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I think as far as deliberations go, that and this sort of gets back to, I think, what was really talked about last week. I'm comfortable with the two family use at both 21 to 25 Hancock Street and at 27 Hancock Street. And I think that with respect to 27 Hancock Street, it sounds like there's still some uncertainty or some questions that remain before we can do anything with the the special permit for nonconformities. So I think that, you know, with that being said, in kind of poking around the neighborhood, the one thing that I noted that that really kind of caught my eye relative to the relative to the the length of the proposed buildings and, you know, that taking this into account with Attorney Mead's comments that with respect back to 21 to 25, this really doesn't matter. The the church in the back of 21 to 25 Hancock Street, the church on Purchase Street looks like from the the assessors card that that's about 89 feet long and 40 feet wide. So there are other big buildings in the neighborhood. I don't know if that is taken as a positive or a negative, but I will put that piece of information out there. Mr. Moore, do we, do we want to go through the, the the special permit findings here as part of this deliberation?
I think we will do that. I think I'd like to have a little more discussion with the board first to see where where people are on moving forward.
Okay.
We will come back to that.
Yeah. Okay, so as, as I've said, I am comfortable with the two family use on both these, these properties.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Webb?
Thank you. Yes, I as well am comfortable with the two family use on both parcels. I am, however, feeling like, you know, there's still some information that you know, procedurally, we're looking for before rendering final decisions. So I feel as though there's some unfinished business here with regard to the, the, the letter from the city solicitor and also the planning board.
Okay, fair enough. Mr. Swan?
Yeah, I like Rachel said it pretty well there. I mean, I don't. We all said in the last meeting that the two family use is fine. And as far as the 21 to 25, since we know the town's lawyer is looking at this open question, it'd be nice to get their opinion before we have to decide on that. It'd be also nice, since this is headed to the planning board shortly, to see, see where they are on the whole thing. But I think the applicant should feel comfortable that, you know, the board is comfortable with the two family use. You know, if that's a big question, I still have a problem with the rest of this application. We have to wait for the, for the council and we and scale also comes into consideration and the fact that you have, you know, what's being built across the street from it as well as part of that scale thing in my mind. But so I don't, I think we're okay with the use, but I think there's still some information to be learned on the, on the rest of it. Those are my comments.
Mr. Chaglin?
Yeah, I have to agree with my colleagues. I don't, I don't have a problem with the two family use on either lot. And if there are some open issues as far as the DCOD and the solicitor coming back with comments, I guess I would tend to lean towards waiting to get that input. With that said, if there aren't any issues with the DCOD, I'm probably okay with with the scale. I do appreciate the applicant making the changes they did and coming back with the renderings and the you know, the trees, the drawing with the trees and everything. I think, I think that was, that made it a lot easier to understand what they were doing. But I'm okay with waiting until we do get some additional information so we can make, make a more informed decision.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chan. Mr. Bennet?
Oh, I would agree on both parcels. Two family units, certainly. I believe the criteria have been clearly satisfied for that as to the scaling and mass. I also agree that I don't find these, the one structure that is subject to that analysis to be inappropriate in terms of scale, massing, or size relative to the property lot itself or relative to the neighborhood. And I I can't find a metric to suggest to me otherwise. And I believe the applicant has done a commendable job in developing this in a way which, in my view, is a market improvement to the, to the, to both properties.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bennet. I think my colleagues have expressed a lot about what I was feeling is that, first of all, the detailed improvements and just showing the landscaping that was going to be proposed was very helpful. Again, not our purview, but very helpful in going over this plan. And while the size, scale and massing only applies to the 27 Hancock Street building expansion, we have been asked to look at both of these together, and both buildings are meant to basically kind of mirror each other. So you know, one sort of depends on the other. And I kind of feel like the rest of my colleagues in that, while we have this KP Law addressing the DCOD, handling of the existing historical house and how that needs to be treated, that could really affect what happens on 27, which I'm sure would affect what was going to happen on, on 21, 25, especially since we're looking at these in tandem. So I guess, like, you know, it sounds to me like the board's leaning more towards requesting to continue this until we get in an opinion on the DCOD issue and to make sure the site plan approval is done, which is going to be, you know, first of April. Is that kind of where we're standing with this?
Um, Mr. Moore, if I could?
Yes.
So I don't think that anybody should fool themselves that we're going to be in and out of the planning board in one night. That's not how the planning board works, because they have peer review. We have to go in and have a conversation with them about it. And then we're going back to them. You know, at some point, somebody has to go first. And that's what we're asking the board to do. So I understand the outstanding question related to 27. I understand that. I'm not happy about it. It's not how the process works, but all of a sudden it does. So, so be it. But I would ask the board to at least vote on the use on 21 to 25. So we at least get something done as we go into the planning board and then continue the meeting to after the first planning board meeting, which would be April, our first meeting with the planning board is April 7th. So your meeting, I think, would be maybe the 13th.
Yeah, I don't have that in front.
Yeah, it would be April 13th. So so I would ask the board's indulgence to at least do that on 21 to 25 and continue 27. There are two separate applications. And then we'll come back to you after we go to the planning board on the 7th.
All right, I appreciate that. Board, we have the applicant asking if we want to take these separately tonight and vote on 202104 special permit for two family use. How do we feel about that?
Can I make a comment? This is Ken Swan. Can I make a comment? This is Ken Swanton. Um, you know, I think we've all said in the last meeting and tonight, we don't have a problem with the two family use. My concern with voting on it before the planning board even sees this thing is I've never voted on one. Technically, maybe you can do it if it's a paper street. But until the planning board kind of formally makes this a street on the, on the town zoning map, even the, you know, both of the houses don't have the frontage they need and it's, and I don't, I don't see what's wrong going to the planning board and saying, yeah, we've been there twice. Both times, everybody said they have no problem with two family houses. That's clear. So I don't see why voting on, I, I'm uncomfortable voting on it when the street hasn't even, you know, I would like the planning board to chime in that the street is one that you can take frontage off of. I, you know, I have a lot of confidence in, in you Lisa Mead, but I'd like to hear the planning board say it. Anyway, that's just my opinion. And I don't see what you gain from it really because you already know we're all, all okay with that.
Anyone else on board have a comment? All right. I would agree with Mr. Swan that I think, I, I don't think the two family use is an issue. And I just procedurally, I, I, I'm just not sure if we should, if, if I should entertain a motion to go ahead with the vote on 21, 25 and and go from there and see if we get a motion to, to approve and, and that's how we'll deal with it.
Mr. Moore, if you're saying you're not going to vote for it, Mr. Swanton's not going to vote for it. We sadly request a continuance to your April 13th meeting.
Okay, board applicant has requested a continuance to our April 13th meeting. Uh, and that is for both 21, 25 and 27 Hancock Street. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Rachel Webb.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead and.
The motion.
I make a motion to continue 21 dash 25 Hancock Street, case number 2021 dash oh four special permit to the ZBA meeting of, sorry, what was the date? April 13th? Thank you.
I'll second it, Ken Swanton.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Swanton to continue 21, 25 Hancock Street, 2021 dash zero four to the April 13th ZBA meeting. Uh, we'll now go for the vote on that. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore is also a yes majority or passed unanimously. So yes, this will be continued to our April 13th meeting. Um, now we still have 2021 zero two and 2021 zero three. Do we have any emotion on, on this or these two applications?
This is Bud Shagman. I'd like to make a motion to continue 27 Hancock Street, 2021 dash oh two and 2021 dash oh three. Special permit for non-conformities and special permit will allow two family use respectively to the April 13th meeting.
I'll second it, Rachel Webb.
I have motion made by Mr. Chairman, seconded by Ms. Webb to continue both oh two and oh three on 27 Hancock Street to the April 13th meeting. We now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is also a yes. That's all in the affirmative. 27 Hancock Street is also continued until our April 13th meeting. I thank you all for your patience on that. We now move to the next hearing on the agenda tonight, and that is Louisa Tanner and John Watkins, care of Lisa Mead at Mead, Tellarmine and Costa, 260 Northern Boulevard. Applicants requesting a special permit for non-conformities to renovate and reconstruct a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family home. Might we hear from the applicant?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellarmine Costa, on behalf of Louisa Tanner and John Watkins, who own the home at 260 Northern Boulevard. There's actually two homes on the lot. Andy, if you could the presentation, that would be great. With me this evening are certainly Louisa and John or Jack, as well as Scott Brown, who's the architect on the project. So the property is located in the R3 zoning district and the Plum Island overlay district. And there are two single-family homes on this property. Those two single-family homes have existed on this property since at least 1969. And so they're pre-existing non-conforming. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. The proposal is to make no changes to the existing footprint, but to add on to the second floor, and you'll see here in a minute why, and to renovate the existing first floor. There is, we'll keep the roofline change under 35 feet as required by the ordinance. There's no increase in that. And we're seeking an approval to increase the FAR from point four seven to point five oh, which requires the special permit. There will be an additional bedroom for a total of three, but as Scott's going to review, that's actually splitting up the space that currently exists on the first floor. The property currently includes 130 point 36 feet of frontage where 120 is required in the district and 6,240 square feet of area where of course 12,000 is required in the district. The current structure was built in 1969 and therefore is built at grade, wasn't built on pilings in 1969. If you go to the next slide, please. So here you can see, many of you might know this property. Probably you all have driven out there. This is just a few houses down from the point. So that would be the northernmost end of Plum Island. Uh, and it's a property that has this little house and a smaller house beside it. The north side of reservation terrace is in the back. And then of course, Northern Boulevard is in the front. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. So here you have it. And this is where you can see where the addition is going to go. So there's a very small second floor. And Scott's going to show you in a minute to get up to that second floor right now is a spiral staircase. Jack and Louisa bought this home as a retirement. There's currently a bedroom on the second floor and what they're trying to do is have safer stairs up to the second floor with an additional bathroom on the second floor for ease of access. But this is the existing footprint that the addition is going to be built over. And if you go to the next slide, please. And this is from Northern Boulevard. And you can see that there will be some changes to the decking, actually a reduction in the size of decking around the house. And here's a side view. And you go to the next slide, please. And this is the inside of the second floor. This is the bedroom in that corner over there houses the spiral stairs that come up right now. If you go to the next slide, Andy. And this is the first floor where you can see the spiral stairs going up to the second floor. So at this point, what I'd like to do is turn this over to Scott to review the plans.
Well, thank you, Lisa. Good evening. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. As so as Lisa had already mentioned, the whole impetus of this project was, has been about the replacement of the existing spiral stair and the addition of a second floor bathroom for a couple that are considering aging in place here. In the course of solving these issues, we are also tasked with cleaning up the exterior, bringing up the level of finishes, bringing up the level of quality and consistent with what some of the other houses in, in the immediate vicinity are doing and have already done. And this includes the replacement of the existing vinyl siding and poor quality windows. So this is the existing condition floor plans that I've included these because I think it's important for everybody to see, everybody to understand why it is what we are, we are doing. And in the lower right-hand corner there, you'll see the existing second floor plan. And as Lisa mentioned, there's the spiral stair. You know, it's a good-sized bedroom on the second floor, but the bedroom is open to below with the spiral stair there. You know, on the, on the, the left side, you'll see the existing, you know, first floor plan, again, the spiral stair that we're hoping to replace. And a rather ill-proportioned bedroom in the, in the lower left-hand corner of that plan. So it is currently a, a two-bedroom house. And Andy, if we could go to the next slide, which is the proposed, we're actually two slides away, a 1.1, which is the proposed floor plans. Here we go. So first thing you'll notice is in the, you know, proposed floor, first floor plan to the right, we have reconfigured that existing bedroom space into spaces. In order to do that, we had to, you know, move an existing bathroom to the front of the house, making a, a much more efficient, you know, floor, floor plan. So technically we are adding another bedroom to this house, but it's entirely within the existing square footage. And it's just, uh, we've been able to create this by simply moving things around and, and making it a more efficient layout. The other thing you'll notice is this new sort of code compliance stair that we're putting in. A new code compliance stair takes up an awful lot of square footage, often more than we want to give up. And in this case, at the second floor level, it has added 112 square feet to the project. You also see on the second floor, you know, we're have added this, this bathroom that we spoke about. There's also a closet up there. And yeah, maybe one could argue that's a little bit more than we need, but this is really about trying to address some of the constructability issues of the project and also trying to make for clean architecture on the exterior. And Andy, if we could go to the next slide, please. There we go. So these are proposed elevations for the project. As Lisa had mentioned, you know, all of our additions are within the footprint. The only square footage that we are adding is at the second floor level. Uh, we are proposing a new roof on this. We have fought very hard to keep the height of it down. And despite putting a new roof on this, this structure is a mere 18 inches higher to the median roof, roof line over what is currently there. And Andy, if we can just go back, back to the site plan. There we go. Thank you. And just finally, just, just a quick word about the FAR as it pertains to this project because I, I know that this board has struggled with this. So at, at a glance, you know, the existing FAR of point four seven and a proposed FAR of point five may make it seem like, you know, we have a giant project on a small lot. But keep in mind, we have two dwelling units on the same lot, both of which need to be, need to be factored into this, this calculation. Also, very importantly, had I calculated this a year ago, prior to the planning office's memo about how to, how to calculate FAR, I would have arrived at a very different, a different number. You know, a year ago, I, I would have had a proposed FAR of point two nine and an existing FAR of point two six. You know, the, the difference is that I would not have included the basements, basements plural, because there's two structures here, two structures with basements. You know, both of these structures have basements over six feet high. You know, and because they're over six feet, they both need to be included. And 268 Northern Boulevard has a basement of exactly six feet, which needs to be included. They're both unfinished. They're both entirely below grade. And the inclusion of these has really skewed the numbers. So it's not very not a good reflection or a good barometer of, of what we are doing here and how this, you know, compares to other structures in the neighborhood. And, and finally, I, I, you know, I think that, you know, what we are proposing is modest. And I think it's in a certainly an improvement over what currently is there now. And with that, I will hand it back to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Scott. So what the board's decision here is in 21G4A because of the proposed increase in the FAR by point zero three. Um, and the board needs to determine whether or not that is substantially more detrimental to the existing than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood or to the pieod. Uh, and in this instance, I might remind the board that substantially means to a great or significant extent in the context of the neighborhood and when you read it in the context of the ordinance. So if you go to the next slide, Andy. So first, there are no changes to the footprint of the home. There's no impact on lot coverage. And we actually are reducing the size of the exterior decks. We are not impacting any of the dune or sand area in the area. We're going to make the home safer for the residents of the home by removing that non-code compliance spiral staircase. You'll see there's a change in the roof style and an expansion over the existing first floor. But again, nothing to the, the base of the house as, as exists. The proposal's compatible with the surrounding area and certainly does not increase the height in a great extent, other than 18 inches, as Scott has pointed out. The purpose to remodel this home is to provide, as I said earlier, a bathroom and safer stairs onto the second floor. And as Scott indicated, those stairs take up a significant amount of square footage. The applicant doesn't propose to excavate again and do any damage to the dune around the, around the home. Uh, and it will be nominal. We believe based upon all of that, the board can find that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or to the pieod. Again, I remind the board that in the pieod, to go above the FAR that's already non-conforming requires a special permit and not a variance. I'm, I'm compelled to once again point out to the board that the planning staff is suggesting that this board do something that actually it has no power to do and, and may not actually entertain. Now, the planning office is stating, you should be careful about not approving the special permit for fear of what might happen on the island. And as such, even small expansions should not be approved because then there would be a small expansion and a small expansion and a small expansion. Uh, the planning staff's request is misguided for a couple of reasons. Uh, first, the zoning ordinance permits such applications to be filed and fairly considered to determine whether or not this board decides whether or not they're substantially more detrimental to the pieod or to the district or to the neighborhood. Interestingly, if, and we've had this conversation about a year ago, if the city wants to change the ordinance, the city can change the ordinance. Uh, two weeks ago, there almost was a proposal to change the ordinance. In fact, the city council withdrew it and didn't even consider the change in the ordinance. And so the legislative body has said, this is what you have to work with. You may or may not be comfortable with that, but the legislative body has decided not to change the ordinance, notwithstanding the planning staff's comments to you. Secondly, under the law, it's not appropriate to speculate about future unknown circumstances relative to growth and development in the pieod. Um, in the case of Fitzsimmons versus the Board of Appeals of Chatham, the court said, the board erred when it took into account as bearing upon present, a present decision, a putative problem to be faced in the indefinite future upon now uncertain facts. In the Britain Board of Appeals versus Gloucester, the appeals court said, "The board's concern regarding the presidential effect of granting the plaintiff's permit application was that in the long term, it would result in the expansion of two or three stories of shoreline residences on tiny lots throughout the neighborhood. However, neither chapter 48, section six, nor the bylaw permits denial of special permits based upon undifferentiated fear of the future. The board may not simply, may not deny a permit simply by conjuring up a parade of horribles, particularly when it has the power to prevent them in the future." So while the planning staff may want you to consider what might happen in the future, what the board has to consider are the facts in front of it. And in this instance, there is a request for a very small increase in the FAR. It doesn't impact the size of the footprint of this structure or how it's constructed. And I finally want to comment on the, uh, planning staff's suggestion that you put this off too, until this conservation commission has an opportunity to determine whether or not this is considered a substantial improvement. And I respectfully suggest again that the board has, doesn't have the right to do that. In fact, the wetlands In fact, the Wetlands Protection Act says that an applicant should receive all other permits before coming to the conservation commission. They don't have to, but the conservation commission can require. Secondly, the applicant, applicant may get this decision and may never apply for a building permit and may never go forward. But that doesn't mean that this board can't make a decision. The reality here is this, it's just a matter of circumstances. The applicant is still gathering construction estimates and quite frankly, is waiting on an appraisal. And appraisers, if anybody has done any work in the, in the real estate area in the last couple of months, appraisers are so behind that they have, they're waiting a month and a half to get an appraisal. So they would like to get this permit, if possible, or at least get this board's determination while they await the rest of the work that they need to do for the conservation commission, which is not a requirement of this board. So the applicant respectfully suggests and requests that the board approve this special permit for this increase in the FAR for the reasons stated. I would also note to the board that the applicant has provided three letters of support in 266 Northern Boulevard, 255 and 268 Northern Boulevard from its neighbors. And we're happy to answer any questions or provide any clarification to you.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. With the presentation done, we now turn to asking for public comment. So anyone again that is listening into this and wants to comment on this proposal, please electronically raise your hand to be recognized. Not seeing any hands, Drew.
Seeing none, Chair.
All right. One more second. If anyone needs to raise their hand, hit that little raise hand button. Going once, going twice. Seeing none, we will close public comment and go to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Questions for the applicant regarding everyone's favorite topic, the FAR. So where we're picking up the extra FAR here is where the second floor is becoming, is increasing in size to kind of match or almost match the footprint of the first floor. That's my first question.
Yeah, I'll let Scott answer that. But yes, that, that is, that is the answer. Scott, you want to be more specific?
There's like, could we, Andy, could we go to the proposed floor plans, A 1.1?
Thank you, Attorney Mead.
There we go. So on the second floor, yes, Mr. Delisle, you are correct. It's the stair at the front, the front of the house, which has added 110 square feet to the project. I haven't calculated the square footage of, so that's, that's where the increase in FAR is, has been. And also the addition of the master bathroom and master closet there in the top left hand corner. And those are the two things that have moved the dial with regard to FAR.
And there's no, there's no change to the, to the footprint on the first floor, correct? The, the foundation remains the foundation and the footprint remains the footprint?
That is correct.
Okay. And then with, when you provided sort of the, how it would have been calculated a year ago versus how it is calculated now. If in a hypothetical world, this gone stilts and we were just still talking about FAR and we were ignoring the height, if it were up on the metal silt rather than having a concrete block foundation, that, what did you say, Mr. Brown? 800 square feet or something like that, that is attributable?
Yeah, I don't know the square footage off the top of my head, but I know, I do know that it would be, existing would be point two six, proposed would be point two nine. And again, it-
And the simple reason for that is because, because that, that square footage attributed to the basement goes away if it's up on stilts.
That's right. That's right. And don't forget, this includes both dwelling units on the property.
Yeah, that was, you, that was my, my final question. The, the, the other dwelling unit is not at all involved in this, in this renovation and not at all subject to, to this special permit, correct? That might be for Attorney Mead.
Thank you. It would be subject to special permit only because the special permit applies to the property. But there's not, yeah, there's nothing being proposed for the smaller cottage.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. I'm interested in the conversion of the existing bedroom space on the first floor and how does that become two bedrooms? Is that what Mr. Brown said?
That's correct. We can see that, you know, the proposed first floor plan right there that, you know, I'm calling it a bunk room. And I'm calling the one in the lower left hand corner a bedroom.
To make those spaces work, have you moved that wall out? I mean, is, are they wider?
No, I mean the wall that, that goes north, south. Even the common wall where I'm, have a note saying, consider pocket door.
Yes.
So yeah, it's very important for structural reasons. We're, we're trying to sort of think about like, how are we going to put this together? It's very important that we sort of keep that wall in place because that is a bearing wall. So we did not want to move that at all. So we're trying to, you know, do our best to try to limit the amount of renovation in the houses to as little as possible.
So is that technically a bedroom? Because there's no closet in there. I thought the building code definition needs a closet and a window.
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. I mean, that's why I mentioned it sort of barely. I mean, I could see an argument both ways. You know, I don't know that, you know, a bedroom per the building code absolutely needs a closet. So I think it's, it's right. I think it's, yeah, I think it's borderline.
Interesting. Cause yeah, they, I mean, you're proposing the addition of a bedroom where it's a two bedroom house now. It will be a three bedroom house when you're done. So I think it would be, it would be good to get that resolved if that third space really is technically a bedroom in terms of building code or not.
Ms. Webb, it, but it doesn't matter because the, the applicant's allowed to go up to three bedrooms. They're allowed to go up by right to one bedroom. So if they didn't do anything else in this house and came in and did interior renovations and added a bedroom, they wouldn't require any permits other than a building permit. So it's allowed under the pie out to go up to three bedrooms since it currently has two.
Yeah, this is Andy Port, the Director of Planning and Development. I would, my understanding is that it's not a requirement, but the bottom line is I would agree that the, this property has an allowance for the one additional bedroom. So I guess in terms of whether or not the board's approving it or not, it is within the ordinance to allow this additional bedroom.
Thanks, Andy. Any further questions, Ms. Webb?
No, I think other than that, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Swan?
Yeah, I'm, I have a question. You know, we don't see a lot of these where there's two houses on the one lot. And we've been talking about the one house. When you talk about the FAR going from point four seven, point five oh, or the old way, point two six to point two nine, does that include both houses on this lot or just this one house?
Yeah, absolutely. The calculation includes both.
Both, okay.
Yeah, and the little blue house that we can see there in slide seven.
Yeah.
You know, off the top of my head, I believe that is, you know, first floor footprint around 460 square feet. And, you know, also be 460 square feet in the basement that both of those count against the, the FAR.
I, I get it. So does the little house, I assume it, does it have, does it have bedrooms as well in there?
Yeah, I believe there's a bedroom in that house.
Okay. So when we talk about going from two to three bedrooms, we mean in the white house here, not in the darker house on the right. That also, okay, I'm just trying to keep this straight because we haven't seen one of these, at least in my tenure here with the two houses on one lot. The, you know, it's, this FAR thing, we've struggled with it for a year now. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, we have to, as a board, figure out what's more detrimental to the neighborhood, what, what becomes substantially detrimental, not just to the neighborhood, but to the pie out as a whole. And FAR is one of the few guidelines that we kind of like can see in there. There's also bedrooms and other things. And, you know, I have no problem with people rebuilding their houses, you know. And if you're, if you're under the FAR, you know, expand your house. But, but going over the FAR is where I wonder about whether it gets substantially detrimental. Now, in this case, it's already over, whether you do it the old way or the new way. And the question you're, what you're really proposing is to go further over. And I saw, I guess my question is, if you had to live within wherever you are, whether you're at point four seven now under the new way of doing it or point two six, you had to live with where you are and you wanted to make the renovations so the folks here could age in place or the different things they want to do. I mean, did you look at that case of, you know, I mean, how many square feet are you off? And where could you take them out of? And did you go through that?
Mr. Swan, I'm, I'm sorry. Do you mean to get it under the?
Just to stay with, no, just to stay where you are. I realize you're over. I'm not suggesting, you know, somebody has to shrink their house to do something. But just to, you know, if you want to, you know, make the bathroom on the second floor or whatever you're trying to do there. Did you look at, is there a way, is there a way you could design this such that you did not expand the overage on the, on the FAR?
Well, you know, without providing, you know, part of the whole, you know, like I said, the whole impetus of this project is about putting a new code compliance stair into the second floor. And we cannot do that without increasing the, the FAR. You know, it's 100, it adds 112 square feet to the project. And there's really nowhere else, if you could go back to the floor plan, there's really nowhere else to put it here. You know, we have to go outside the volume, you know, therefore increasing the square footage.
So it's both that and the closet and the bathroom on the third, those are the three.
I did mention that, you know, I mean, yeah, we are providing the bath there and a closet on the second floor. And, and, you know, I did mention that's perhaps, you know, a little bit more than the minimum that we need there. But that's really about two things. One, trying to sort of make for clean architecture, clean roof lines on the exterior. And also trying to sort of deal with some of the existing conditions that we have below us. You know, to make this something that we can construct easily and economically. And that's why that has that footprint there with the master bathroom and the master closet.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate you addressing.
Those two spaces are design driven and, and, but the stairs really, that's more of an engineered solution. Building code tells us that, you know, we need to have a certain number of, you know, risers. They, you know, the treads need to be a certain width. And that pretty much determines the, you know, what we need for space there.
So if I could just follow up on that, because I think, Mr. Swan, you know, I've heard, I've heard you all struggle for the last year on this FAR question. But the, the way the ordinance is written is that there may be instances where even if you're already over the FAR, or even if you're not, interestingly, even if you're not over the FAR, you can go over the FAR with a special permit, not with a variance, right? So this is standard, if you're over the FAR, it's already non-conforming. And you can seek to increase that non-conformity, intensify that non-conformity with a special permit for non-conformities. And the decision is not that you just draw a bright line and say, you just can't do it. The question is, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pie out than the existing condition? Substantially meaning to a great or significant extent. And in this instance, what, you know, what is the harm to a great or significant extent to the pie out? And it's all within the footprint. We're adding stairs to make it safer and a bathroom on the second floor, all of which are, take the bathroom and the bedrooms, all of which are calculated into the size and operations of the sewer and water system on Plum Island. That's how the zoning was drafted. But I, I think it's important to remember that there is a different standard for Plum Island that the city council, when it adopted the zoning originally, Plum Island, didn't make going over the FAR a variance, didn't make it a variance because the island lots and houses are so unique. And so they didn't draw a bright line because they understood every situation need to be taken into consideration in and of itself in the neighborhood. And so the question is, is this additional, I don't know, 300 and some odd square feet or something like that, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood or the pie out than the existing condition? And I, I don't think that you, the board can draw a bright line. I think you have to take every application as its own application.
Yeah, if I could just follow on that, I mean, I'm, I'm not bringing up a variance here. I mean, I, you know, even if, even if this was a variance, there's no strange lot or soil conditions. I mean, that's, that's kind of a, that's not want to bring it up. And we do sometimes make exceptions. We had one a couple of months ago where somebody, you know, was in a wheelchair and had to put a vestibule in front of their house and they went over the limit. And we were like, we get it. That's fine. This is a case where on top of it, you're adding a bedroom, which kind of like, it's, you know, I, I realize this within the footprint of the first floor, but it, it, it makes it even harder.
You're also allowed to do that by right. You're allowed to add this bedroom by right.
I know, I know. But we on the board have to decide whether taking a house that's already over the FAR number is detrimental to the pie out as a group. And I just needed to ask whether you looked at other ways to do this expansion. Maybe take some space out of somewhere else. I don't know. Take some space out of the little house next to it. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just, I just here to ask questions at this stage and I just was asking the question. So that's all. And I appreciate it. Thank you for the discussion. I have no other questions.
And I, and I think, I appreciate your, your conversation about it too, Mr. Swan. And I, I don't mean to dismiss it at all. I think that the conversation is important.
Thank you both. Mr. Chagrin?
I think my colleagues have asked all my questions. I'm good, Chair. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Bennett?
I have no questions.
Excellent. I just had a couple of questions. Actually, I think I just had one. Can you just address the, the deck sizes? And any changes that are going on there?
I think if you go, Mr. Moore, Andy, if you go to the site plan, and then Scott, you can pipe in on this, but I believe that we have the indication on the site plan of the reduction and change of sizes of the decks. So we do. So if you can blow up that a little bit. So we're removing, you can see in the, on the left hand side, removing the 101 square feet of the deck and stairs and replacing it with 56 square feet of new stairs. You can see that. If you go over to the right hand side, we're removing the existing entry stair and landing, which is 41 square feet. But then at the back, there's a new covered entry stair landing at 37 square feet. So that's a difference of about four square feet reduction. And then the other ones are second story. So I think that's important. And one of the elevations that look kind of like, or actually one of the floor plans, it looked like that front corner was filled in and it's not actually filled in. It's, it's a deck, it's covered by roof, but it is a deck. So the house is kind of an L to Mr. Swan's point. The, the compact, I think Scott can describe that the attempt to limit the indoor living space, if you will, on, on the house, but maintain the design and lines of the proposal was important to the applicant.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have any further questions.
Mr. Moore, this is Mr. Delisle. Can I just poke in with another question?
Go right, go right ahead.
Thank you. Just quickly, just if Mr. Brown could just describe, you know, the, the materials on the exterior, that would be, I think, helpful as well.
Well, what you're seeing in this, this rendering is that we're, we're hoping, budget permitting for a metal roof on this project. There's a couple of metal roofs in, in, in the neighborhood that my clients, you know, gravitate to, and we're hoping to do something that is as nice as those other metal roofs. We're doing, you know, white cedar sidewall shingles here. Hopefully they're, they're going to be pre-dipped and, and a color. Planning to replace, you know, like I mentioned, the, the windows with, you know, high-quality aluminum clad window and, you know, the rest of the materials would be, you know, rot-resistant materials, either painted polyash or PVC where appropriate.
Good, thank you. That sounds, that sounds really nice, actually. Thank you very much, Mr. Brown.
Does that take care of it, Mr. Delisle?
Yes, indeed, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, sir. Any further questions from, from anyone on the board? All right, hearing none, we close that and we will go to deliberations and we circle right back to Mr. Delisle.
Thank you. So for me, I, I agree, I mean, I hear what Mr. Swanton is saying. And I typically, you know, in previous FAR Plum Island situations, I have been pretty much in lockstep with Mr. Swanton. But I think with this one being on an existing foundation and you're doing the things on the second floor as of right, I'm having a little bit of a hard time really wanting to stand in the way of this project. So I, I'm okay with, with this project. I don't think that the expansion really would constitute something that would be substantially more detrimental to either the neighborhood or the, or the PIOD. So I can support this, this project.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Webb?
I agree, Mr. Delisle could not have said it better. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Very succinct, I like that. Move on to Mr. Swan.
Well, I usually concur with my colleagues, but I don't, I just, I, I don't like intensifying a density of a property that's already over the level, particularly one with two houses on a little lot. So I cannot support this.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Mr. Chagrin?
I have to agree with Ms. Webb and Mr. Delisle. I have, I think I can support this. I think it's a fairly modest change to the existing home. And although it is outside the FAR calculation, I, you know, I think it's within the purview of this board to, to make that type of decision. So I, I can support this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chagrin. I'm going to echo my colleague, my colleague, Mr. Delisle. I think he, he probably spoke for all of us on this. The applicant correctly states that we struggle with FAR a lot with this. But this seems like a really unique property. I think the addition is thoughtful, it looks greater and there is kind of a, a unique setup to why the FAR is, is what it is. And while it's, it's never, a thing that you want to do as a board to, to go over the FAR, it is something that we can do by special permit. And I think it, I think it's reasonable and I don't see it as more detrimental at all to the PIOD or, or the neighborhood. And additionally, in any recent discussions around changing, you know, any kind of PIOD rules for expansion, you know, it had been mentioned by, by some of the sponsors that vertical expansion was preferable, encouraged versus horizontal. And that's where the, and that's where they want to really look to control things. So first of all, it hasn't, nothing's moved forward, nothing's changed. We're going with the old PIOD rules. But if, if the general consensus, you know, seems to be vertical and this is a vertical using the same footprint, fractionally worse, but to, to gain a lot of use and use and safety. Instead of echoing Mr. Delisle, I just rambled on, but yeah, I can support this as well. So at this point, we'll entertain a motion, I guess.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Delisle, to approve 260 Northern Boulevard Special Permit for Non-Conformity File Number 2021-7.
Motion. I'll second that motion, Chair.
Excellent. Motion made to approve by Mr. Delisle, second right, Mr. Chagrin. We now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle?
Yeah.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
No.
Was that a no?
Yes, that was a no.
Thank you. Mr. Chagrin?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore is a yes. So it's four in the affirmative. The application's approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item on the agenda is Seven Shandell Drive. David and Laura Marr, Care of Lisa Mead and me, Teller and Costa. It's application 2021-08 Special Permit for Non-Conformities to remove and then reconstruct a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family home. And might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lisa Mead, me, Teller and Costa, 3 Green Street, New Report for the Record. And with me this evening is David and Lisa Marr, who are the owners of the property at Seven Shandell. And the architect for the property is Scott Brown. You might have heard from him this evening. So if we go to the next slide, please, Andy. The Mars are proposing to remove an existing structure and reconstruct a new, single-family home. The structure was built around 1981. It's located in the R2 District. Scott's going to talk about some of the issues with the home in a minute. The lot is a corner lot with a radius. And that is why we're here. It's the only existing, non, the only existing non-conformity is the rear setback of 14.8 feet, where 25 feet are required. However, what happened was in 2012, when the zoning changed and defined a lot, corner lot and the radius, that rear lot, that line that we're going to talk about became a rear lot before there was no rear lot line, given the configuration of the lot. We'll talk about in a minute. The proposal is to intensify the rear setback to 10.1 feet. Otherwise, the proposal and the lot meet all of the dimensional requirements. If you go to the next slide, please. So here you have it. It is actually a perfect PI. And in 1981, when this was created, the, the lot actually had no rear lot line. It had two side lot lines. And as you can see, at the time, the house would have met all of those dimensional requirements. In 2012, the city council adopted a new definition of how you calculate rear lot lines on corner lots with radius and/or radii, if you will. And as a result, the lot opposite, the longest calculation became the rear lot line. And that's where the 10.1 setback is on the proposed and the 14.8 exists on the existing conditions. Otherwise, other than that, everything else on this proposal meets the dimensional requirements of the ordinance. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Scott to review his proposed plans.
Oh, thank you, Lisa. Scott Brown, the architect for the project. If we could just start with the site plan. Andy? Thank you. So this project originally started out as a renovation project and, and we were hoping for a project that didn't require any relief. You know, because in my, our minds, meaning myself and, and my clients, the Mars, certainly not the attorney or the, the planning office, because in our minds, it seemed like the, the lot line, which is shared with Nine Shandell, the property on the left there was, was a side yard and not a rear yard requiring a larger setback. You know, thus triggering a special permit. So, you know, we were caught a little bit off guard by this. And this is just such a unique and oddly shaped lot. So despite being caught off guard, our scheme hasn't altered very much because this is such an odd lot that there aren't many things that, that one can, can really do differently. You know, and as I mentioned, we were planning to, to renovate the house. But as the project evolved, it, it started to make more and more sense to start new. The tipping point, which made this a new construction project, was that, you know, my client, David Marr, who was in the, the drilling and well business, did, did a little experiment in his basement during a rain event. And what we learned from that is that the groundwater was only a foot away from the basement slab. And, and this wasn't what I would consider a significant rain event or prolonged rain event. So that really sort of made us question what we were doing with regard to renovating this house. So, so we stepped back and we decided that we really needed to do the right thing here and put in a new foundation at a much higher height to a height that was comfortably above that, you know, groundwater level. So the new, you know, new footprint that we are proposing here is more or less the same as it was when it was a renovation. You can see the grayed out house, existing house underneath the, you know, our proposed footprint there. And, you know, the only exception is like sort of a couple of bump outs on the back of the house. And if we could just go forward to the next elevation, Andy, or A2.1, the proposed front elevation, please. Here we go. So what we are proposing is a, is a classic New England shingle-style home. It's got a gambrel-shaped roof line. It's two stories, just like most of the other houses in the neighborhood. And despite doing a new foundation and, and raising this, this is only two feet higher than, than the existing house, two feet higher to the median roof height. Meaning like, you know, that this house will still be in scale with the rest of the, the two-story homes in the neighborhood. So we're planning a, you know, to, to do a high-quality project here. We've got, you know, white cedar sidewall shingles to weather, high-quality aluminum clad, you know, wood windows, rot-resistant trims that are intended to mimic real wood. And, you know, we certainly hope that, you know, everyone will see this as, as an excellent addition to the neighborhood. And with that, I'll hand it back to council, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Andy, if you could go down to slide nine, please. So the, of course, the test under Section 9 B3B is whether or not there is a new non-conformity. And in this instance, there's not a new non-conformity. We are intensifying that rear non-conformity. But we're permitted to do that if the board finds that the proposed change will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure. So here you see an aerial view of Shandell Drive. And right at the apex, you can see the, the existing structure and the neighboring structure. So if you can go to the next slide, Andy. All of these homes are built approximately the same area on the lot because the side lot line are 10 feet. And that's what most of them are, but in, in addition to the exact neighboring structure. But you can see the kind of weird shape on this particular side of, of Shandell Drive. We believe that the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, non-conforming structure with this small increase in that non-conformity, which still would meet the sideline setback at 10 feet, if that's what it was. At the hot time that house was constructed, as you know, the definition of corner lot was different. And so now we have a rear lot there. The adjacent structure at Nine Shandell is also about 10 feet off the same lot line. So that's not going to be any more detrimental there. And as Scott indicated, the house continues to be, you know, same two-story house that exists in the rest of the neighborhood. The, the result is that the applicant requests and that the board finds that the proposed reconstruction of this house is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood by increasing that now rear line setback slightly to 10.1. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. We'll now take public comment. If there's anyone that would like to comment again on this application, that's attending the meeting right now, please raise your hand at this time and wait to be recognized, unmute if you have something to say. Believe there is a raised hand.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephanie Neketich, 93 High Street. So my concern here is simply with the, the uniform application of our zoning. This application has been presented as an extension of an existing building in terms of the relief sought. And it's not. It is a brand-new building. The applicants have chosen to to remove the building and build a new building. And so I don't think it is a, an extension of a non-conformity. It is a new building with a new non-conformity. And so the relief being sought might be different. And I understand that the zoning administrator has presented this as not requiring that type of relief. But I also know from sitting through many zoning board meetings that the special granting, permit granting authority can determine that the relief being sought needs to be different. And I'm just, you know, it might be something that you would consider in this case, just for the integrity of our process and the uniformity of the way that we apply zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neketich. Does anyone else have a comment? Please raise your hand. Seeing none. We'll close on public comment and move on to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Attorney Mead, could you indulge me and just run through this side yard, backyard?
Sure.
Situation, once again, for me, I'd appreciate.
Sure, I'm happy to. And I'm, at the same time, I'd like to address Ms. Neketich's comment after I do that, if I could. If you could go to the site plan, Andy. So when this house was built, there was no definition of corner lot. So it only has three sides. And the, so the two, let's call them the right angle lines, were considered the side yards. And the curvature was the entire front yard. But there's a definition change in 2012, which basically says you have to run the, where you have a curved radius and a corner, you have to run the sidelines out till they meet and the longest one becomes the front yard. And so when the longest one becomes the front yard, the rear lot line is the one that's next to Nine Shandell in the rear. And that becomes the rear lot line. To address Ms. Neketich's comments, she's actually incorrect. In the City of Newport and many other communities in Massachusetts, where you have a pre-existing, non-conforming structure on a lot, and the building inspector or a zoning code enforcement officer in this case can permit you to review that, remove that pre-existing, non-conforming structure and rebuild it. And it's still non-conforming. It's called the alteration. And it has been happening in the City of Newport for, well, I've been doing this since 2004. And it happened before that. Happens in the town of Salisbury and many other communities. So that's not an unusual. So that's not an unusual situation. And this is how the zoning has been interpreted for many years.
Thank you. So just, that was informative. But backing up to the, to the lot line between nine Shandell. So that entire lot line from, I guess, sort of the, the street down to five Shandell, that is treated as the rear lot line.
That's correct.
The two, and those, in this site plan, those dashed lines that go out beyond the arc, those are the lines that you're talking about where the one that that goes along Shandell, that longer of the two dashed lines becomes the front lot line, making the lot line between nine Shandell and seven Shandell, the rear lot line.
That is correct. That's those dotted lines are the engineer's calculation to determine the front lot line.
Got it. Okay, okay. That's helpful. And then what, what did we say the height was going to be on this versus the old height? I think Mr. Brown said it was, it was two feet, but what were the the actual data point?
The proposed structure is 24 feet. And I think if you go, maybe go the existing elevations, Andy, or on the
It would be in the
zoning table. Do you have it, Scott?
It would be in the site plan if we could just zoom out.
But so the, the proposed is 24, so we're well under anything. That's enough, that's enough information for that. No, we don't need to pull that out. That's okay. All right, that's, that's good for me. That's the only questions I have. Oh, thanks, Andy.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. And then we have the the measurements. Moving on, Ms. Webb, do you have any questions?
This is a very interesting application with the radius shape, the corner lot. Unique, I should say. And so I'm just looking at the, I don't really have any direct questions. The proposal was very thorough. In our staff report references a street tree, let's see. Okay, I guess we're waiting, we're waiting for confirmation from DPS that the, about the sidewalk doesn't need replacement. And the tree commission is recommending one large street tree to the east of property towards five Shandell Drive.
Right, we will comply with the, we'll comply with the street tree and sidewalk ordinance as required. That's, that's not an issue.
Okay. No, I don't have any other questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton.
The one butter that's really affected here that's close to this, what I guess we're calling the rear law line, is the folks there at, what, nine Shandell? Have they commented positively or negatively in this process?
So I don't think there was any public comment tonight. And I believe Mr. Hazel time might be on and he, he has spoken to most of the neighbors who have no objection to the proposal. So if you want him to speak up, he can speak to that.
But that's all right, that's all right.
Okay.
That's all right. I know, that's fine. You know, I was going to ask a question about scale, but I walked around the neighborhood there and I think this house, there's other, the one in front of it there or to the bottom of this picture is also quite large. So this one, it's not like the other one earlier in the agenda tonight that was very large for its neighborhood. So this is, frankly, we're not supposed to comment on design, but I don't think it's a bad looking house either. So I have no other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Swanton. You know, compliments never heard, I imagine. So, Mr. Chagrin, do you have any questions?
Question, I was curious, when we look at the old footprint and the new footprint, I'm assuming you're not using the old foundation. Is that true?
That is, that is correct. This is an entirely, entirely new construction.
Yeah, so just out of curiosity, I mean, you could have put the house where you would have maintained the 14 foot setback that's there today. But what's driving that extra four feet? I know there's a bump out, but you know, bump outs can be moved.
It's really the size of the garage. The current garage there is rather narrow. I think it's maybe at 20 feet. And, you know, what we're proposing here is slightly larger at 22 feet, which is what I would consider sort of a minimum size for a two car garage.
Yeah. Okay, Chair, I've got no other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chang. And Mr. Bennett, do you have any questions?
I have no questions on this one.
Okay. My question is to go back to the bump out that Mr. Chadon brought up. So the attached garage is wider. I see that, but that it's the actual little bump out off the side of the newly grown garage, for lack of a better word, because it's getting late.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if we could just go to the front elevation, I think what we're seeing there, A 2 point on A 2.1 front elevation, that's an additional bump out, which is really sort of a lean to, you know, a half bay or storage bay, as you will, for, you know, yard equipment, which is somewhat essential because the garage itself is very, very tight. That we're seeing right there in the lower right hand corner, that's that additional bump out.
Because that's really what's causing the, what is part of hitting that.
Part of it, correct, yes.
I have no further questions. So we will move on to deliberations and remember that this is a special permit for nonconformities. And we need to structure or any conversation, comments, deliberations as such. So as always, we kick it off with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Again, this looks like a nice project. Clearly, there will be no addition of a new nonconformity here. And I think it looks like to me and based on my knowledge of the Shandell neighborhood, that the change proposed here detrimental to the neighborhood than what is currently there, even when taking into account massing and size and the structure and the lot. So I can support this project. I think this looks, looks nice.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle. Ms. Webb?
I can support the project. Thank you.
Mr. Swanton?
I too can support the project. Thank you.
Mr. Chagrin?
Ditto.
Thank you. And you took my quote away between the ditto's and Mr. Delisle's wonderful leadoff description. I would agree that I can support this project. So with that, I think it's time to entertain a motion.
That's Rachel Webb. I'll make a motion to approve case number 2021-08, special permit for nonconformities for seven Shandell Drive.
Mr. Chagrin, I'll second it.
Excellent. A motion to approve made by Ms. Webb, second by Mr. Chagrin. We now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Tragman?
Yes.
Mr. Moore is a yes. All the affirmative applications approved. Thank you. Our last public hearing tonight, moving on, is for 10 Riley Avenue. Application 2021-09, a special permit for nonconformities to remove existing, preexisting, nonconforming, single family home and construct a single family home in its place. Sounds oddly familiar. And it's David and Brian Matter with Lisa Mead. And what we hear from the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Lisa Mead, me tell them the cost of their Green Street on behalf of the applicant. And with me this evening is Eileen Graff, who is the architect. And I believe David and Bree are also on the call this evening. So this is 10 Riley Avenue. It's in the R2 zoning district. If you go to the next slide, please, Andy. The proposal is to demolish and reconstruct a single family house at 10 Riley with a new attached garage. The property is nonconforming for lot area and frontage and front yard setback. The length of the front yard nonconformity will be reduced, but it will be intensified up in an upward vertical action. The property is proposed, otherwise meets the other dimensional requirements of the ordinance. If you go to the next slide, please. So the property includes 9,236 square feet of area and 78.58 feet of frontage along Riley Avenue. Very typical lot around there. The original house was constructed around 1957. If you go to the next lot slide, please. So as you can see, the, everything else is in conformance. And even the front yard setback is nominally nonconforming at 23 and a half or 25 is required. And of course, we won't be doing anything with the frontage and lot area. If you go to the next slide, please. So here you can see the structure in the hash line underneath is the existing structure. And the front of this house at the 23 and a half line is actually the garage. So we'll be taking the parking from the outside next to the neighbors into the garage. It has a little bit of living space above it and Eileen will go over that in a minute. But aside from that, you can see it also is narrowed in its width and its nonconformity. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eileen to review the elevations.
Thank you, Lisa. Could we, oh, thank you. These are the existing elevations of existing structure. And then if we could flip to the floor plans of the proposed, that would be great. Thank you. So the design goals for Bree and David and this property was to create a, you know, a single family home, a three bedroom with attached garage in order to mat and sight it so that we maximize some of the benefits of the property, a lot of privacy on the backyard, et cetera, and really sort of expose the living space to that private backyard. So you can see on the first floor plan, it's taking, which is the left side of the drawing, it's taking advantage of exactly that. So we've, we've created first floor, open floor plan with kitchen, living, dining on the back, on the back of the property. As you move towards the front, as Lisa mentioned, that closest structure to the front setback is now the garage. And that garage space is actually entered from the side. So the driveway will come in and then bend to the right in order to access the garage space. So then between the garage and the, and the living space is the sort of critical mudroom and powder room space in that alcohol connector. And then if you look to the right, we've created all the bedroom sleeping spaces and the associated sort of bathrooms that go with it. So very standard in its, in its layout, two floors, no attic space. And you can see from the square footage counts on the left side there, we're at 3214 in square footage. And then if we scroll to an exterior elevation, I could walk through those. And here we go. This is the top elevation is the elevation off of Riley. As we were mentioning, the garage is the structure to the right. And that's coming towards you in the sort of L shaped configuration. And then further back is the, is the, is the sort of main body of the house with the front entry on the left. And then the bottom elevation is the back view to the property. You will see all those French doors on the, on that ground level. And that's the kitchen, living, dining space, entering out into some covered porch area with an extended sort of larger area on the left side, which has more, more space for sort of living, living, outdoor living. And then the next elevation are the side views. So this would be as if your back is towards beacon, looking towards, say, Marlboro. And you could see the side entry of the garages on the right side, sort of again, it's L shaped. So the left side of the structure, as you see it, is the piece that's closest to us in this view. And that's the master above with the living space below. And on the bottom drawing, the foot view, and this shows that covered space that I was referring to with the, with the outdoor living, there's a fireplace there. And then as the, as the sort of living space connects over to the garage, you could see that's the far left part of the structure. In general, if we maybe flip back to the front view, the material choices here, it will be traditional collaborates on a majority of the structure. Thank you. And then there's a sort of a banding, switching to a wider boarding on the lower level, creating a base. There be a sort of a reduced second floor ceiling height as ways to minimize the building height. There are varying from seven feet to five feet. The garage structure there is the top of wall is at five feet with dormers popped in to just give a little bit more head height and light where needed. But this helps again to bring down the scale and the roof height. We've got some extended overhangs, some detail with some bracketing. There is a mixture of roofing materials. The main body of the roof would be architectural shingles. And then taking moments on the first floor level or the ground level with some one story structures at the front entry for covered that might, could be covered in the metal roofs. Likewise, on these one story bumps at the garage, also opportunity for the metal roof. So adding some detail to the textures and materials of, of the, of the building to help give it a little accent and some high level finishes. All the windows are going to be casement style windows, some fixed. You know, for basically, as you see it, for light in different proportions. So the, the neighborhood definitely has a mix of styles ranging from capes to two story reproduction colonials. But we felt our design was somewhere sort of falling in between in regards to scale and to massing. And so again, the overall building height is lower, 26 feet with no intended third floor space. And then overall, I think that the house blends traditionally New England in terms of form and inciting with some unique design elements, playing with window proportions, the overhangs and some curves. But with that, I'll let Lisa continue with the presentation, but I'm happy to answer and address any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Eileen. Andy, if you could go back up to the, to the site plan, that would be great. Or maybe the first photo that follows it. So I'd be remiss in talking a little bit about this house because it's very important to Bree. So it's the yellow house in the middle. So Bree grew up in Newport. She's a Newport high grad and a fellow UMass alum. Met David and moved to California. This was her grandfather's house. And she told me a story which some of you may appreciate. I'm not sure how many, all of, how long all of you've been in Newport, but there used to be an Italian, family Italian restaurant down on State Street, Lower State Street, where Taylor rental is called Labadini's. And so she recalled walking in here every Friday night and smelling the Italian takeout from Labadini's to have dinner with her grandfather. So Bree is purchasing this house and moving back to Newport from the West Coast, which I think is a really awesome thing for a born and bred person to be able to do. So go to the next sliding. So this is the house right now. And I just, I have, I think it's important because you can see the mixture of houses around it. When you go to the next slide, you can see the driveway outside. You see the houses across the street. Eileen was talking about the different architecture. We have a colonial, we have a gambrel, we have a cape and a half next door. You go next slide, please. Similarly, you can see the houses across the street here. Next slide, please. This is from the rear. And then this is towards beacon. So you can see there again is a reproduction colonial. And then this is towards beacon. So you can see there again is a reproduction colonial over on Beacon Street. And similar, that's another view. So that's the rear of the house. And here's the front corner. You can see that cape with a story and a half next door. And I think we have one more. And then this is the front view again. So here, again, we're not created, the board has a two step review. We're not creating any new nonconformities. And so the next question is whether or not change will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the preexisting nonconforming structure. And in this instance, we believe that that is not the case. That the proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. First, the nonconformity is shortened along the front lot line from thirty six to twenty one feet, while it's intensified in an upward extension. The applicant proposes to replace this single family home with a new single family home. The new home will continue to conform to all other dimensional setbacks, except for, of course, the lot area and frontage, which it has no control over. The new home will provide enclosed parking by relocating the parking that is adjacent to the neighboring property into the middle of the lot in the garage, which is a side entry garage. And the new home is more consistent in size with the other homes in the neighborhood. You know, four of the five abutting homes directly around there are more than one story tall. The neighboring home at to the north at eight Riley is one and three quarter stories. The neighboring home to the south at forty beacon is two stories. Eleven Riley across the street is two stories, as is seven Riley Avenue at two stories. And as Eileen showed earlier on the plans, the home is proposed at twenty six feet in height well under the thirty five foot limit. Additionally, the house will continue to have will have sixty percent open space on the lot once it's completed where forty percent is required. And we would also be remiss if I didn't say that the applicant has received five letters of support across the street at seven and eleven Riley beside it at forty and forty two beacon. And then behind it at eighty five Marlboro. So it's interesting, the eighty five Marlboro House property goes all the way to the back to the rear of this property, which goes to the issue about the use of the backyard, which Eileen was talking about, the privacy back there. So with that, we believe the board can find that this proposal is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure, and we'd request your approval.
Thank you, Attorney Mead, and thank you, Scott, for the explanation on the architectural design. With that presentation done, we now move to public comment. If there's anyone that wants to comment on the application that was just presented, please raise your hand electronically to be recognized. Seeing none. Given that this is the end of the raising hand, I would hope everyone would be on board and be able to do that quickly. So I'm going to say that we you're not seeing any public comments. I'm going to close that portion and go to questions from the board, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I don't have any questions on this one, so I'm gonna pass.
Excellent. Ms. Webb. Rachel, can you hear us?
Sorry for the technical delay. I have no questions.
It wouldn't be a Zoom meeting without it. It's not a problem. Mr. Swan.
No, my colleagues already asked all my questions, so I have.
Excellent, even some humor late night. I like it. Mr. Chagman.
No questions. Excellent presentation, very detailed and informative.
Mr. Bennet.
I have no questions.
Long distance, no questions. I have no questions. I wasn't sure these letters of support were going to get mentioned. So and they were mentioned. So with questions from the board complete, we'll move on to deliberations again, starting with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
And I know you will do this, but I'll just say that even that this is a special permit for nonconformities, we will construct our discussion around it, as I know you so expertly do.
I'm not gonna do it this time. I'm gonna let someone else.
Okay.
So as as we've listened to the presentation, I think we can all take away the fact that there will be no new nonconformities here. And I think that, in my opinion, the the changes proposed by the applicant will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what currently exists. I think that, you know, that this is a nice design. It's an update on that on the property and the the neighborhood on on Riley, there are quite a mix of of different housing types. So I think this will fit in quite nicely. And lastly, I will, I will just say that for the for the record, I played on the baseball team for for Labadini, so I understand what the applicant must have enjoyed when she went to see her grandfather. So that's that point.
Excellent. Ms. Webb.
I can support this application. I concur with Mr. Delisle's comments.
Excellent, Mr. Swan.
Yes, I too can, I concur.
Mr. Chagman.
Agreed. Nice house design, great improvement for the neighborhood, definitely not more detrimental. This poor little house just needs some love. So great design. I can support it.
Excellent. And I will agree with all my colleagues' statements, except that I did not play for the baseball team. So with that, we'll entertain a motion.
That's Rachel Webb.
You go ahead, Rachel. It'll be your last one.
Thanks. All right. Yes, I make a motion to approve ZBA case docket number twenty twenty one dash zero nine for ten Riley Ave, special permit for nonconformities.
And I will second that. This is Mr. Delisle.
All right, we have a motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Delisle and to approve twenty twenty one dash zero nine. So I will now go to a vote. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
Mr. Moore says yes as well. All in the affirmative, the application is approved. Thank you very much. And well done, Ms. Webb. It's a way to go out. At this point, this concludes the public hearings on our agenda. So I will close that portion of the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we move on now to the business meeting, starting off with the approval of the minutes from two twenty three twenty one. Do we have any comments from board members?
Yeah, I actually have two very little things. Just on page three and the second of last paragraph, which starts out Stephanie Nikotik. In the second line, the proposed structure should smaller, it's missing a verb, should be smaller, just add the word be. The proposed structures should be smaller and simpler. And finally, on the next page, the first pair down the bottom, there's two paragraphs to start with Mr. Swan. The first one of those two like the fourth line, he asked how this scale and missing is sensitive to the neighborhood. I think it's scale and massing. So just change missing massing. That's all I have.
Excellent. Changes duly noted. Does anyone else have any additions, edits? Comments on the the minutes before we look for an approval?
I move, we approve them. This is Ken Swan, as amended.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
But sharing in second.
All right, motion to approve the minutes for Mr. Swan, and seconded as amended, and then seconded by Mr. Chagman. We go to a vote now. Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
I'm gonna pass as I did not have the opportunity to read them.
Excellent. Duly noted. Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Chagman.
Yes.
And Mr. Moore, yes. That's for an affirmative one extension. And the minutes are adopted as amended or proved as amended. Next on the business meeting agenda is a discussion with with Andy Port. The PIA development restrictions permitting, et cetera. It's promised this would be well done and brief. So we'll hold him to it. Yeah. And do you want to take the floor?
Thank you, Cheryl. I will keep it very brief. I know it's late this evening. Just brief, the zoning board of appeals has been over the years, looking at projects on Plum Island, as well as other areas of the city, of course. We've seen some increases in sizes of of structures on the island. Part of that actually stems from a zoning amendment that was adopted. We're looking back through our records, but there was a zoning amendment adopted in two thousand eleven, or sorry, yeah, two thousand eleven that made a change from the need to get a variance for certain increases to lowering the bar to needing only a special permit for nonconformities. Or a special permit for that for that threshold. So so you know, folks have a basically an easier time in some cases on Plum Island of getting expansions or doing things. Where on the mainland, something would require variance. I think that's a lot of folks don't necessarily understand that about the Plum Island overlay district. But the there was some recent discussion of the city council. The reason I mention this is because there was some recent discussion at the city council. There was initially, there were two proposals that were submitted to the city council for consideration that would have affected what types of development or expansion could happen on Plum Island. And I'm just going to give you a quick update on the status to those just who understand in context as you're thinking about your applications. Or whether or not you think any changes to the zoning regulations would be beneficial. The first one had to had to do with Conservation Commission regulations. And I believe that my understanding anyway is that that is in the council's subcommittee, city council subcommittee for review, and then it's probably going to be staying there for some time. I believe until possibly the fall to at least allow further discussion of what we're going to see in a study that was initiated by the town of Newbury to look at the sea level rise and flooding conditions on the island going forward. So in the coming months, there's going to be a series of meetings. We're still waiting for details on the dates from the consultant working for Newbury, but but in essence, there'll be a couple of meetings to present the updated flood maps and talk a little bit about the fiscal implications of sea level rise for the island in particular, given that it's the most vulnerable area of the city. So that is is going to be panning out. And so that's right. So that brings me to circle back in the ordinances. Again, there's one that is related to Conservation Commission regulations. And I said that's in committee and it's probably expected to stay there for the coming months to let that process of looking at the maps unfold before anybody considers changes to the regulations. Again, that's not my ordinance change, but that's my understanding of that, where that stands. There is, there was a zoning amendment change to the Plum Island overlay district, which your board administers typically for special permits, you know, for expansions and modifications. As you've seen, you know, tonight and other nights. And the essence of that proposal was to prohibit further growth or expansion of structures around there. So things like new new bedrooms beyond those that are already there today. Or additional square footage or additional horizontal construction within the flood hazard zones, because a good area of the island is in flood hazard zones and will be in worsening conditions in the future based on the the maps we're getting from the consulting engineers. So the bottom line is that that proposal was brought forward to look at whether or not the we should be curbing the growth in the island rather than what's happening, which is there's been sort of a ballooning of growth on the island. And whether or not that's in the city's best interest or the neighborhood's best interest, because all of that public and private infrastructure is effectively going to be in hazards way more so than it is today. So at any rate, that zoning proposal got withdrawn completely. So that's no longer in the council's docket. I wouldn't expect there to be any other revisiting of that zoning change or one like that for Plum Island for the remainder of this year. But but again, I think that public process that's going to be unfolding with the consultants initiated by the town of Newbury for to look at the maps in this municipal vulnerability preparedness grant. I think that'll be worthwhile for folks to track that and participate. So we can let you know when we have more specific dates, we could send you the link to the the meeting. I suspect we'll be posting our city calendar. But it's a meeting that's being set up by this project that was initiated by the town of Newbury to look at the the new maps and talk about the fiscal implications of of the changing conditions on the island and the worsening flooding and inundation that will happen in different areas, not just the, you know, one or two spots. So at any rate, I just wanted to update you on the status of those two particular code changes, one of which had to do with the Plum Island overlay district, mainly because there was discussion in the past about whether or not changes in the language were necessary or beneficial or desired in any way to clarify the extent to which the city council wants to enable or not enable growth or, you know, with development on the island beyond what is there today. So there were discussions of other miscellaneous details related to that, but that item is not active. So there's no further discussion happening of that. The conservation one, like I said, is in committee of the city council, but I I'm not expecting any substantive action on that, that it would remain in committee for the coming months. So just an update on that, I thought was worth your while.
I appreciate that, Andy. And I know that the link to the study that was last week that was recorded. I found it really informative. So I know there's going to be more details of that as you just explained. So certainly, something will certainly all I'm sure keep an eye on and stay stay on top of as we go forward. Is there anything else?
No, thanks for the moment to update you on that.
You bet. Thanks, Andy. And before we go any further, I just want to say, given that this is Rachel's last night, I just want to thank her for her dedicated service on the ZBA over the last couple of years. And we're going to miss her attention to detail. And thoughtful, constructive comments on all these cases. So hate to see you go, but congratulations on a new job.
Thank you very much. Andy, I wanted to ask you, as I may have mentioned, on I'm, I was on that Plum Island Sea Level Rise Advisory Committee as the zoning board designate, and I would hope that someone else might step up to fill the position. So.
Yes, thank you, Rachel, for doing that while you were here. And as Rachel mentioned, if there's any ability, given the the board, this board, more so than say, the planning board in Newburyport is looking at projects on the island in the Plum Island overlay district, you're the ones that are getting triggered for review for special permits and whatnot. That it'd be beneficial to have someone from this board as a stakeholder in that discussion. So if there's someone that can you know, fill that seat where Rachel's leaving, that's great. If if not, obviously, you know, we'll keep in touch with you and let you know where that that's going. But we thought it'd be helpful mainly because this project is not talking about regulatory changes, it's presenting the information. But it's useful to to help frame the type of questions that people will ask, or the type of information that should be displayed to have input from, you know, planning from ZBA members, residents on the island they have in the group and so forth. So.
They meet like about once a month or so. It's during the day, like twelve to two thirty. So.
Yeah, and they're probably it could be completed by June, so it's not a long, it's not a year long. You know, obligation either per se.
All right, that's a good heads up. That's a a job opening, a volunteer job opening. So if anyone has anything, we know it definitely is something that might be move us to to have a mole on the inside and know what's going on there. And Andy said she had questions. So thanks very much. All right, with that said, that concludes the business of today's agenda for March ninth, twenty twenty one, and entertain a motion to close. We'll do this by voice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Meeting is adjourned.